The Board of Selectmen Charter Revision -- Board of Selectmen Special Meeting Regarding Charter Revision Commission Draft Report is called to order. The time is 5:20. I am Selectman Battalay, I'm filling in for the first Selectman who will be joining us shortly, and I'm joined by Selectwoman Plachek. I ask you all to please rise for the pledge, and Miss Comfortable, you lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the public, the purpose of this meeting is discussion and possible action on Charter Revision Commission CRC Draft Report, including any potential recommended changes to be submitted to the CRC. Public comment will be taken with this item. I'm just going to ask that we just wait for the first Selectman, who will be joining us shortly before we begin discussion. Thank you for your patience.
Hey.
Oof.
It's a hot one.
Really hot, it was a restaurant opening. It stinked.
Can I get you water?
No, no, I'm good.
Are you sure? Okay. All right, I called the meeting to order. We are ready to go.
All right, cool. All right.
So, I didn't make any motions.
Not yet.
Just, as we said, the pledge.
You've said the pledge.
I read what discussion item number three is, so we are ready to get started.
Okay, discussion item number three, discussion and possible action on Charter Revision Commission Draft Report, including any potential recommended changes to be submitted to the CRC, and public comment will be taken with this item. May I have a motion?
One more second.
Okay. Let's, any, sorry, what? Any recommended discussion items or changes to the Charter, for the Charter Revision?
Want to go back over the discussion we had?
Yeah, last time, I think we should just formalize it.
I just have a question about procedures. So, we have attorney members of the commission here, would you okay to just, is it right to ask questions for them? Are they going to participate in the discussion? Just want to have an understanding of what.
Can I ask the town attorney? We can ask questions if you're ready, yes.
And in terms of specificity on recommendations, does it, how specific do we need to be in terms of what we potentially move forward to the commission? As opposed to, I want you to look at, you know, the makeup of the board of education members. Just want some guidance before we.
Sure. So, the statute requires recommendations for changes that you guys might want in the draft report, and there should be somewhat, it doesn't have to be extremely specific as to change this, you know, this word to that word, but it should be, should have some level of specificity as to what you're asking them to look at and what you're trying to accomplish and change. And a lot of this would be fleshed out when you guys, you know, you'll make motions tonight to make recommended changes, and then when the commission and then your board meet, you'll be able to flesh it out further into, you know, what your thought process.
Okay. So, I'd like to make a motion. Go ahead.
Would it be all right if we had them come up and sit with us again?
What, the commission or the attorneys?
All of them. Well, just if we can have an easier discussion back and forth about.
We can ask questions if you're ready, yes.
And in terms of specificity on recommendations, does it -- how specific do we need to be in terms of what we potentially move forward to the commission? As opposed to, I want you to look at, you know, the makeup of the board of education members. Just want some guidance before we --
Sure. So the statute requires recommendations for changes that you guys might want in the draft report. And there should be somewhat -- it doesn't have to be extremely specific as to change this, you know, this word to that word, but it should be, should have some level of specificity as to what you're asking them to look at and what you're trying to accomplish and change. And a lot of this would be fleshed out when you guys, you know, you'll make motions tonight to make recommended changes, and then when the commission and then your board meet, you'll be able to flesh it out further into, you know, what your thought process.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion. Go ahead.
Would it be all right if we had them come up and sit with us again?
With the commission or the attorneys?
All of them. Well, just if we can have an easier discussion back and forth about --
I'm okay with members of the commission coming and the town attorneys if sitting at the table.
Okay, fair to the --
Jerry, would you like to come up and sit at the table?
I'm fine doing whatever helps the process.
Sure. Jason, how are you?
Good. How are you doing?
Chris has a question. Oh, Chris, go ahead.
Hi, my -- not being there in person. May I comment on select person Vitale's question on specificity? At least from --
Sure.
So, and I know this message has been conveyed by me and my vice chairman. We, we, we the CRC, when you're done, will have a proxy, will have 30 days to make, you know, final recommendations back to the Board of Selectmen. So we would, we would like your recommendations to be specific as possible. It would be, it would be really hard to just say, section 7, 3A, you know, we don't like that, can you guys go back and rework it? So if there's, if you're unwilling to say, change, you know, this word to this word, at least give us some idea of what your thoughts -- please.
I agree with that. We don't have a ton of time, and we should be able to be specific at this point. So I would like to make, I would like to make a motion to change where, where with, regarding terminations, where with, for terminations for cause was changed to without cause, to change it back to for cause, even though that is like an overriding requirement in the charter. But in certain places, I think with, without cause was added to certain sections, I would like to remove the without cause. You second that? Any discussion?
I just want to ask with the, I know that the police and fire chief are based on their contracts. Would they be included in this, or are they just per their contract?
So this doesn't affect contractual rights that parties have, so they could have additional protections by contract above and beyond what's in the charter.
So they wouldn't need to be included in this provision?
Oh, thank you.
Um, I think, I don't actually remember offhand whether this was changed.
So for police, um, I believe we already --
The statute, right? So there was discussion during the charter meeting, I think I heard one time, the one charter man about, there was discussion about the fire chief, and that he may not have that same contractual or state statute or something.
That's correct.
Right. So it's not --
You know, so for the police chief, there's a statute that requires processing clause, so that was taken. The police chief, it doesn't say without cause in this draft charter because of that. The fire chief, there's a statute that requires certain processes. It's not clause, but there's, there are certain notification and things that need to be done pursuant to statute that's also not changed by the charter. Like the statutory requirements, and there's a, there's a section in this charter that specifically says, talks about collective bargaining or contract relationships, that those prevail over anything that might be in the charter itself. So if you have a contract with someone that says for cause, the charter doesn't override that.
So what would be your recommendation to, would it need to be covered in this all department head, or would it be the fire only? Do you think it doesn't need to be, or is it automatically, you say, department heads?
Well, I mean, the motion, I think, is to revert the change, any position that was removable with cause, and we, the CRC change it to without cause and change it back, right?
To --
Right.
But that's a, that's a policy judgment for this board and the CRC to make.
But if, if I may, the current charter does not say with cause. So since, you know, the revision, we have to consider the revision from the 2006 charter. So we would be changing it from no cause or without cause, there's absolutely nothing in there now, right, to changing it from nothing to with cause. What we've done up until this point was change it from nothing to without cause. So just be clear, we're not reverting back to cause. Cause would be a direct change from the charter today.
That's a very good point, yeah. So I think, I think this board should be clear in the motion, whether you're saying that it should be, I guess, which officers you're talking about in terms of removal with or without cause. Because Chris is right. I mean, the most, it was silent as to most officers.
Right.
So I'm just going through and looking at, I mean, it's --
You would have to include fire?
We added it to each department head. Sorry, I don't mean to keep --
Right.
I'm assuming you're disabled, so if that's okay, if that's not okay, please just let me know. So we added it to every department head. I think the, there are only two department heads in the current charter that say you have to have with cause, and I'm drawing a complete blank on what they are, I'm sure.
Economic development, without --
Yeah. Now, all the other ones had nothing. So we would, again, just so everyone's clear, the change would be from nothing to with cause, if that's your decision. Now, if you're, if you're changing, First Selectman Gerber, if your change is everywhere our commission said without cause, if you want to take out the word without, that's a very easy thing for us to process, and we can debate that. Or as, or as Attorney Pierce said, you know, give us a list of specific department heads that you want to say with cause, and then the other ones can say without cause, you know. This is, this is really the, the one question that I wanted specificity on.
Yeah, yeah.
Seriously. This is, this is really it. All the other ones --
Well, we can go through each one.
For the town attorney, I think, and the charter attorney, can you give us advice? Should it be everybody?
That's a, that's a policy question. It's early up to you.
Yeah.
That's a policy question.
Because I don't feel comfortable picking and choosing whom.
I would agree with that.
Well, I mean, I think for, the default rule under the existing charter was that during the term, it's removal with cause only, and there were a few positions that were without cause. So the positions without cause, it was like economic development, town attorney, town treasurer, I mean, we don't, mostly default, the default is with cause. What the Charter Revision Commission did is it specified the length of the term, that it's until removal, resignation, or retirement, it said it was without cause. So it's really up to --
Was that for everyone in your deliberations, or was it for only some?
Without cause.
Unless it was contractually prohibited, or just contractually prohibitive, then it was everything.
I'm not sure that we've removed the terms. I think, you know, if you, if we remove the terms and we say only with cause, then every, every department head is, you know, you can't remove them with, for any reason except cause, you know, there's no limit to it. So you need to tell us too if that's what you want. Do you want to not have four-year terms like some of them had, or five-year terms, and just have everything only be with cause, or, do you know what I mean?
Is the reality, the policy that you want to force or go to is the pushback that has been given on people who previously in the charter could only be terminated with cause, you want us to go back to that?
Yes. I, I think that you should always have cause. If you, there should be performance evaluations for employees, and if they're not performing, that would be, you know, you would have cause. And, you know, in here, we've, we've, we've added without cause for the tax assessor and, you know, Director of Human Resource. I, you know, it's specifically put in for certain department heads. I don't think that's need, yeah, I'm sorry, what?
All.
All?
Yeah. Not discriminate. Every department head has that.
Now, yeah.
Now, in our recommendation, yes.
In your recommendation, yeah. So you did, that was not, I believe the default before was with cause, and now it seems like it's all without cause. That's caused some consternation, and, and also, what would you say, Chris?
2006, 2006 has nothing. In fact, Attorney Pierce advised us when we were deliberating, there's been three town attorneys that have had to rule on this, on this very subject, and three separate town attorneys have ruled three different ways. So this is one of the, this is one of the things that is broken. And that's why I, as far as I'm concerned, this is just personal opinion, there's really only, you know, if you don't want to go without cause, right, you either have to put everyone to be terminated with cause, or you, or you say everybody has a four-year term, and the next time a new first selectman comes in, everybody's got to reapply for their job, or your, your term's over, and if you're reinstated.
No. Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we need to do that, because that doesn't, people don't have terms if they're hired, you know, unless they have a contract. If they're hired with a new administration, they don't have a specific, they shouldn't have a specific term.
I agree, but they also shouldn't be lifelong employees either.
So our board, though, right now, the current charter has some, some people with terms, some without. So if we want, I mean, is our recommendation that we want to just remove all the terms from the original charter, the ones that do have them, and then just say with cause for everybody else? Because it's not hard to get rid of an employee who is not performing. If they're doing things that are wrong or inappropriate, they're documented. So --
So just to be clear, Selectman Kupchak, our recommendation, we have removed all those terms you talk about and put in without cause. So that's already been done, so.
That's done.
Yeah, that's done. That part's been removed. Like I said, literally, if you want everyone to have, be with cause, which is what it'll turn into be, all you have to do is everywhere we said without cause, just make a recommendation to move the without, and that, as far as I'm concerned, unless, unless Attorney Pierce or Booksbaum tells me differently, that's what we would have to consider.
Okay, so, yeah, I guess, should I amend my motion to remove without before cause, instead of removing without cause and replacing it for cause, just remove the word without before the word cause, yeah?
What did you say?
Remove, remove the word without for, from without cause.
So everything they had, the way they had it, just for cause as opposed to without?
Yep.
If we make sure it expressly says that, then you don't have the problem that these, that the attorneys have had of not knowing if somebody should have been viewed or --
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, Chris has identified the issue. I mean, I think you should say if there's a term, it should be specified, and then the basis for removal also needs to be specified. Currently, the basis for removal is specified, and what has been unclear and has been argued about is the length of the term, because it's blank in that. So if you address, they kind of, it's kind of the two sides of the same coin, right? That's what you guys grappled with.
So what, there are some, the town attorney, I would think, would be the term, would have a term. What does it say now?
It doesn't say anything.
It doesn't say anything now.
But the town attorney's available without cause, which I --
Without, so --
I don't think that should be changed.
I just want to clarify, as we're saying, changing everything, that, no offense, Phil, but in terms of, I think that's a position that --
Yeah, I guess I wasn't clear, Selectman Vitale, so I should be clear. Any of the recommendations we made, the language without cause for the town attorney is in the, is in the current chart.
Was there.
That is, by then, you'd have to remove the word without that we added.
In the red line.
Yeah, sorry.
In the red line. Just want, just want to be clear on that before we --
Yeah, no, that's a very good point. That's a very good point.
Without, so it's with cause.
Right, but remember, we added, the Charter Revision Commission added the words without cause.
Finest, then, just remove the without. To me --
Yeah, I think maybe you need to describe the concept, not like a specific remove the word change.
Okay, yeah. The concept is that employees are not easy to hire, good employees. They're, I think they'll be less likely to want to come work for a town where they can be removed without cause at any time. And it's incumbent upon an administration and a human resources department to ensure that performance reviews are done and that performance issues are documented. And if performance is poor, that then is cause, and there'll be the, the employee, if they're terminated with cause, they're entitled to a hearing. And that's the way it's been, and it's not been impossible to terminate employees for cause in this town. It's happened, you know, so I, I don't think that hurdle's too, too high to get over, that it needs to be completely aligned with, you know, the private sector. I understand why you did it. You want to more align municipal government with the way the, the private sector works, where people are not entitled to keep their jobs forever. But they're not here either, and it really is incumbent upon our administration to ensure that, you know, that we do the appropriate reviews, and I, I don't want to, I don't want to make, to push that responsibility off. I think we can make that happen appropriately. Okay? Should we take a vote?
So I just want to point, so I think, I think what the motion is, is that if removal was with cause before, you're saying it should be with cause, the revision to the charter.
Right.
So that would be the conceptual change. I just want to point out the positions that are in the current charter without cause. So it's town attorney, assistant town attorney, town treasurer, director of economic and community development.
Right.
Those are the four that are without cause for people. So those would remain without cause.
You would take economic development?
Yeah, I, I still don't understand why economic development's in that list, but I don't --
I don't know why it was ever put in. Maybe state statute.
So just if you're looking to make that change, that you may want to just make that --
Yeah, I don't think that person should be --
So just that one and the others usually typically go in the administration?
Yeah, I think should be without cause.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay.
So you're adding, you're adding with cause to the economic development? Is that what, I didn't quite hear it.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah.
Okay.
This will cover, because police and fire have different language. One's with cause, one's without cause right now.
Police and fire have contracts.
But it would be, but they would be --
They would be covered under this.
Considered with cause.
You refer to that, because I know Dorkia Brennan brought up, I, you know, I was real old, you're exactly what she was achieving, concerned about.
In the draft charter?
Yeah.
Well, you guys are making a motion that addresses that.
Yeah, so that would be the fire chief.
Because any, the removal of any officer, under the current charter, the removal of any officer is with cause, unless it is specified that it is without cause. So that's why I want to identify the categories where it was specified without cause, so you know that those are the ones that --
Yeah, it is, it is with cause. The current charter's not silent, it's with cause on everything.
It's with, the default is with cause.
It's specified.
Is it?
Yeah, so it's section, what is it, 10, something?
Yeah. HR having descriptions and every, everything is out. I think it's 9.1.
I, I thought, I thought it was quite undefined, in my recollection.
So, Chris, it's 3.6B, that makes it that during the term, whatever the term is.
Yeah.
Removal is with cause, unless the charter specifies that it is without cause.
Got it, got it, got it, got it, okay.
The complicating factor is --
Complicating was, yeah, the change of administration, right, right, got it. And, and the fact that the term wasn't defined.
Right.
Yeah, right, that's right. I, yes, thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
Are you ready to vote? Ready to vote, huh? Okay, so we're ready to vote on my motion, which is to remove without cause in the sections where it has been added by the Charter Revision Commission, and return it to a situation where department heads can only be removed for cause. May I have a second?
Someone?
Add in economic development.
And to add the, the Director of Economic Development into those department heads, which can, must be removed only for cause, cannot be removed without cause.
I, I thought, I thought it was quite undefined, in my recollection.
Chris, it's 3.6B, that makes it that during the term, whatever the term is.
Yeah.
Removal is with cause, unless the charter specifies that it is without cause.
Got it, got it, got it, got it, okay.
The complicating factor is.
Complicating was, yeah, the change of administration, right, right, got it. And, and the fact that the term wasn't defined.
Right.
Yeah, right, that's right, I, yes, thank you, thank you for clarifying.
You ready to vote? Ready to vote, huh? Okay, so, we're ready to vote on my motion, which is to remove without cause that, in the sections where it has been added by the Charter Revision Commission, and return it to a situation where department heads can only be removed for cause. May I have a second?
Add in economic development.
And to add the, the Director of Economic Development into those department heads, which can, must be removed only for cause, cannot be removed without cause.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Puts, none, station, none. Thank you, thank you for standing and for that interesting discussion.
You guys didn't take public comment on that, I don't know.
Oh, we didn't.
I mean, you could always, you could always reconsider your decision, but you may want to just see if anyone wanted to comment on that.
Is there any public comment on this item? See, none, so I think we took the vote, the votes stand, okay, good. Next item, for consideration, do you want to take one of the educated?
Sure.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider language to give electors more a voice in the election of the Board of Education. I looked at the new Canaan Charter, and I'm just going to pull their language. Board of Education, the Board of Education is an elected body consisting of nine unate members. No more than a majority of six members may represent the same political party on the board. Members of the Board of Education shall be elected for a term of four years, with four members elected at one biennial municipal election, and five members elected at the next biennial municipal election. At each such election, any elector may vote for the total number of members of the Board of Education to be elected at such election. And each political party shall have the right to nominate as many persons as there are vacancies on the board, divided by, there shall be minority representation on the Board of Education in accordance with statute nine dash one six seven A of the general statutes. This is really just to allow the Board of Education to have a six-three majority, which the Board of Finance does, looking at some other boards around the state, also have that ability, and I feel like this, well, I'll, I'll, for it to be formally put on my table, so that's my motion.
Seconded. And any comment?
I don't have a position on this one way or another. Could Karen or any of you comment about, did you get any comments like this during the meetings?
I was not at the meeting, but I do recall that one party took no position and the other party did take a position, but.
Is this minority representation, right?
Yeah, the minority representation, the five-four.
That was the only comment?
That was really the only comment.
So, if, if I may, Select, Selectperson Kupchak, I asked Ms. Devlin, as the leader of the RTC, and Mr. Scheinberg as leader of the DTC, to, to come to our meeting to, to talk about this and bring this up. As it was raised by other people as potentially political, so Ms. Devlin appeared in person. Mr. Scheinberg was unavailable, but, but had a, but submitted a written statement, which, which I read during the meeting. Ms. Devlin was, Ms. Devlin was of the opinion that this is one of our, it's not broken, it doesn't need to be fixed. Mr. Scheinberg was more of the opinion of Selectman Vitale that we should, we should make it, so we should make the Board of Education the same way the Board of Finance can be, which is a six-three majority, and let the, and I'm paraphrasing, but basically let the electorate make that decision if they want a six-three Board of Education or not. And that's the only inputs we, we received on this.
Yeah, just, I, I think we talked about this a little bit last time, and, and I, I think that it was a really interesting discussion, and I think we were all in agreement on the potential ramifications of the way it currently is. The way it currently works is if one political party decides that they know who they want to be on the Board of Ed, then they can select two, you know, candidates, and in a very poorly, typically poorly attended primary, where maybe a couple hundred people come out to vote at most, get two candidates voted on, on the ticket, they are then automatically on the Board of Ed, and that, in the past, has caused some trouble because there were a couple of candidates who really didn't have the, the right temperament and background, or maybe not, not, maybe that's not the right way to put it, but would probably not have been elected in a general election. I think a lot of the public felt disenfranchised by the primary that put these two people on, and that's not really, it wasn't very democratic then, I think it would be best to avoid that situation going forward, and be more like the Board of Finance where that, that wouldn't happen, you know, in this case. You know, in, in a primary where so few people come to vote, you don't, you, you can muster up, you know, fifty, sixty, seventy votes and possibly get people, unqualified people, or the wrong people that aren't really, that wouldn't win in the general election on the ticket, and they automatically get seats, they don't really have to compete, you know, for, for, in the election. They don't really need to go door to door and listen to people, and that caused a lot of problems once. And we should try to avoid that at all costs, I think it was very damaging. People need to feel that they had a vote, that their vote counted, and I think this small fix actually makes that happen.
Well, I just want to interject that the discussion that we had at the last CRC meeting was, and Chris, you will remember this, we had, used to have closed caucuses, I mean, open caucuses, not primaries.
Right.
Where any Republican in town could show up at an elementary school and vote in a caucus, you know, we, we used to work those caucuses. And that he felt that that was something good because every Republican in town could come, and it wasn't a handpicked party person. And after that episode happened, we modeled what the DTC does, and we now choose. But I don't know that this so, so much is going to fix that, because, let's face it, if there still has to be three minority members, the party could handpick those people to run, you know, and, and they're going to win anyway, because they're on the ballot, and it, you know, unless someone does an actual primary, you know, petitions to get a primary, to get on the ballot. So I don't think it solves that issue. I think I kind of get why maybe there was some consternation about it, because, you know, having been on the Board of Ed myself in the past, we always viewed the Board of Ed as being a nonpartisan board, that it was different than the Board of Finance and the RTM, that we actually would work together for the greater good of our students, which typically would happen. So I think that's why there was that, wanting to keep it maybe five to four. I mean, I have no really problem with it going to six to three, I just think it's a very different board because you're talking about education policy curriculum, where I have seen the RTM and the Board of Finance be so incredibly partisan on, on finance issues and spending issues, where the Board of Ed, it's more philosophy. You know, I believe in two high schools, you do not believe in it. You know, I believe in smaller class size, you know, all of this different stuff. And that doesn't really run red or blue, it's just sort of how you, what you think.
And I agree with that, and my, my making this motion really had nothing to do with the, what happened in the press with elections and it being political. It was really, as I said, just to keep, put more power to the electorate in those off years, because they're just not, they're very often not competitive elections. Two Democrats run, two, two Republicans won, run, they're pretty much picked by their parties, and the electorate really doesn't have that much of a say. And the candidates, in my experience, are not campaigning in the same way, getting out there, knocking on doors, talking to people as they are in the years that five members have to be elected. I don't think it's political, I think that if you give more of a choice, you're, you're voting for the best, the best person that you think is qualified for the job, and maybe it, it's less about political party, but more about one high school, two high schools. Depending on the time period. The reading, the reading curriculum, or whatever the hot, whatever that hot issue is, and it's just giving votes anyways.
Right, but that doesn't really negate that, you know, somebody who may not be the best candidate, just because they knocked on a lot of doors, doesn't make, make them be such a great candidate, so to speak.
Not always, for sure, but if you have another open seat, then it makes it more competitive.
It was the, it was more the terms that we were arguing against in oh-six.
Six-four.
Yeah, we were trying, and I know that, and I get it, you know, I get, Alex Trumpbecky was on there, and McKinney, and some others, and they were really hell-bent about changing the terms, where, again, Republican and Democrat passport of Ed members kind of banded together, some of the people I fought the hardest against. We came here and we were like, no, you're going to end up with a board that has no experience, you're going to have people turning over so much, they're going to be doing, you know, Groundhog Day, they're going to be looking at early start times fifteen times, and, you know, all this stuff. So there was, but they didn't ever change that, they left those terms, and those are still the way they are now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I served, yeah, and I served on a six-three board, so I, I don't view it as political, I, having been on that board, it was very much issue-based on how people voted, so.
Just, just in the area of completeness, to respond to Selectwoman Kupchak's point, the other public comment we got was specifically around that, around reverting back to the six-year terms, and then three-three-three, we, we briefly considered that as a commission and did not pursue that. That was the only, only other public comment we received related to this, this area of topic.
What do you guys think about that, the term?
Six-year term?
How that, how it, how it, you would probably speak best to it, but you were on it most recently, I mean, how, how do you feel that, you know, if, say, we lose that, you know, experience on there? You know, the young people are like, oh, let's look at this, oh, let's do that, and then, you know, the way Wise Sage, you know, says, well, you know, we actually looked at this four years ago, and here's what we did, and we should, you should look at those documents. Let's not do that again.
I served on the Board of Ed for six years, and I feel like that was a good term length for myself in terms of being able to certain things through to completion and being there for new board members.
But you had to run, right?
But I had, I had to run twice for those six years, but I think that it's, I understand, like, wanting to do it longer because it's just, things go slowly, and you want to see it to fruition, but it's a lot of work. I think it would be hard to get candidates potentially for six years, so I'm not looking to change, I think that the four-year is worse for the.
What do we have, two-four, and how's it working?
Four-year terms.
Oh, they're all four-year?
Yeah, they're all.
Except for Board of Finance.
Yeah, the time, yeah, everything's four now.
I thought some were.
No, no, it's, time has passed.
Right, and so mathematically, if you were on six, you'd be two-one each. I'm not arguing for that, I merely, that was the point made by the member of the public.
Did you guys, just out of curiosity, did you look at the Board of Finance going to four-year?
Yep, we ruled it down.
What was, what were the thoughts on that?
For, well, for, just to give you my personal experience, first, your, your first four years in the Board of Finance, you're just trying to figure out what the heck is going on, so four-year term on the Board of Finance would, I, I, I didn't, I didn't think was, was, I think it's too short a term, and it was supported by the chairman and, you know, some other former colleagues of mine when I, when I asked. The other thing I'll say, the only, the other thing I'll say about just personal experience, when Ms. Vitale was saying, oh, she served on a six-three board, Ms. Vitale served on a six-three board, and one of the three was a political appointee, right? I'd rather have a process, because that's the only way you can have a six-three board on the Board of Ed, right?
No, it was a six-three board because I ran.
Vacancy, so you won a vacancy.
Oh, you won a vacancy, oh.
That's how I, that's how I became.
Yeah.
Yeah, that can still happen now, no.
Going to stay, because really, the only way the Board of, the Board of Ed can be a, can be a six-three today is by a vacancy or a political appointee, right, so, okay.
Right, it was a vacancy, there was an appointee, and then at the next election, somebody needed to fill that seat.
Right.
Through the electoral process.
Right.
So I ran and got elected.
And the rest is history.
And the rest is history.
Your intention's very clear.
Yeah.
No, I'm fine with it, I just was curious about the Board of Finance, because we have had a lot of people step down midterm on the Board of Finance over the years, you know, and I think, you know, it's a long term, and I think. And it is a long, it is, you know, the Board of Ed's a tough board to be on, and so is the Board of Finance. Let's be, let's face it, a lot of people aren't chomping at the bit to run for these long terms regardless of their board. And we've seen, you know, people say after four years or five years, you know, I'm out. But I'm fine with the board change.
Can we go for public comment? See Judy Ewing is ready.
As I attended meetings in two thousand and six revision, I remember such a discussion about Board of Finance. And the answer from the attorney that we had said that it was part of a state statute that recommended towns have a six-year term for the Board of Finance. And I don't know if Home Rule changes that or not, I think it had something to do with when you started out. You started out with a six-year term, you had to maintain it, I just remember from the back of my mind, my name now.
I, I don't, I mean, most, by charter, most term lengths can be overridden under Home Rule, so, we, we've not looked at whether that's an exception.
The public comment on the Board of Ed going to, having the potential of a six-three majority, which would make midterm elections, you know, more competitive, adding the potential for an additional seat from one party. Seeing no.
In approximately four years, that's correct.
Yeah, yeah. Seeing no public comments, are you ready to go to a vote? Want to make the motion?
You did.
Oh, you did, okay. So we are, we are voting on allowing a six-three majority on the Board of Ed, which would mean that the midterm election would have an additional seat up for, you know, up for election, and make it so that no political party would be able to nominate their candidates and have them automatically on the board. They would have to, they would have to campaign and, and could win or not win depending on the public vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, that motion passes, is there any other items for discussion? Thank you, thank you everyone for that robust discussion.
Could you open your list? We have the list of everything to discuss our last meeting. I'll send this to you.
Happy to, if you.
Sure. One thing I have to say, I, I'm not in the habit of talking about things that I wasn't planning on making a motion on the ten percent, ten-point-one percent, you know, discussion, I, I thought about it and thought about it, and I literally cannot see the import of making that change. I think it's fine, the way it's written, not to exceed ten, ten percent, right, is the way it's currently written. I'm fine with keeping it that way, but I know we discussed it at infinite items, so if someone wants to make that motion, I'm not inclined to vote for that change, because I don't think there's any practical difference between not to exceed ten percent or not greater than, not, not.
So I circulated the legal, I just want to make sure you all saw it, I circulated the legal opinion we previously provided. So ten percent, that number is the trigger.
For redistricting?
No, for the, the threshold of the review that a court would apply to our redistricting. So if we're below ten percent, we have a better chance to sustain any redistricting that we've done.
Right.
That's why we recommended the change to not to, less than ten percent.
Yeah, we just changed the word to say less than ten percent, so you're really talking, the current charter allows ten percent, the new charter allows nine-point-nine-nine-nine, so that's really the.
There's really no practical difference between the two.
Unlikely to be a practical.
Unlikely, because when you're actually, I don't know what your current redistricting numbers are, I assume they're well below nine-point-nine-nine, whatever that is, so, but it's just a matter of the, the case law, you look at the Supreme Court precedent, talks about ten percent being a threshold, under ten percent, the courts determine that it's likely not discriminatory. There could be other factors at play, but there's not a preface case for discrimination under the constitutional principles, which is why we said just change it to less than ten percent.
So under the current charter, you could be compliant with the charter and still trigger the higher standard of review by a court, because there's prima facie discrimination, so that's why it just seems like a no-brainer to me.
Right.
Very minor change.
So I don't need to make a motion not to make a change?
It's in there, it's in there. The recommendation would be to.
Please don't make.
So just to be clear, Bill, you're saying you don't, you don't want to take the recommendation, you want the charter to remain as it's currently is?
Well, the recommendation was to, from the attorneys was to.
He's saying to keep the draft, not recommend change to the draft report.
To the draft report?
Yeah, the draft report is what the attorney said is really defensible and, but we talked about it so much that I thought it'd be worth mentioning that I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I don't have the intention to ask for a change in that, but someone else can if they want to.
So, I mean, I, I, you know, I listened to the discussion about it, you know, obviously you spoke, made references to the past, and I really feel like if it's not broke, why are we fixing it? Like, we've never had a challenge and I don't think this was ever even looked at. I mean, I don't think it was looked at in 2006.
We didn't, we didn't seek to look at it.
And I don't, yeah, I just don't think, like, I hate to, you know, pull something that I don't think has a problem and make a change to it if there has never been an instance where there's a problem.
I can tell you how it came up. We were asked to look at, the Charter Vision Commission had a question for us of whether they could make a change to ten percent, one way or another, like, you know, can, can that number be changed? That was the question we were asked to analyze. Analyzing that question, we, we, our answer was yes, you could make it, you can't increase it, decrease it, like, any, the one person, one vote, like, you know, if there's zero percent discrepancy, then there's really no problem. Like, it's, it's really a range, the difference between the largest district and the smallest district and what the percentage range is. So our opinion was yes, you can change it, you can change it to any number less than ten percent, you can't raise it. And then we recommended a slight change of saying less than ten percent, which means nine-point-nine-nine-nine is less than ten percent, because ten percent is a constitutional threshold where courts take a closer look at claims that are made.
So how do we know that less than ten percent actually means nine-point-nine-nine-nine? Could it mean eight-point-nine? Could it mean?
It could mean two percent.
Anything less than ten percent. So, but, but remember, lower is better because we're talking about the one-person-one-vote standard, so the bigger the deviation, the worse it is.
Right.
So that's why ten percent is the level where the Supreme Court has said, that's a big enough difference that now the town has to defend itself, the town has to justify this. So we're just, look, this is a very minor change, you don't have to go a lot, you could recommend that the Charter Vision Commission doesn't know what it is, but our advice is that it's the protective thing for the town because it forces the town to comply with Supreme Court precedent.
But what about what Judy brought up about that Kentucky case and that whole thing? Does that have any bearing on this? No.
I don't, I don't think that, I don't think that's what that case is about. I mean, with the cases that we provided in our opinion before that I'm here today, that addresses the issue that's applicable to this language.
I'm fine with what the commission put forward, I'm not looking to.
Yeah, thank you for your.
Legal guidance that were given on that. What a public comment.
We're not.
There is no.
I think, I think it should be, unless you have a motion at the end, you should just take, like, general public comment. Do you have your list?
Sure.
So.
Anything else?
I do.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to change the language in section six-point-two, A8, to include the Board of Selectmen review of the capital plan. Language prepare and maintain a ten-year capital plan and submit annually to the Board of Select Persons for review prior to submittal to the Board of Finance for its approval of such plan for the next fiscal year. It's really just adding that clause about review of the Board of Select Persons first in the first board that approves all capital projects, so it just seemed that review of the capital waterfall before it goes to the Board of Finance would be in order.
So just as a clarifying point, so now the process.
Wait, wait, can we have a second? Second.
Sorry.
It's okay. Nope.
So the process now would be first selectman, the first select person generates the list, brings it to the Board of Selectmen, Board of Selectmen says, yep, this is good, then it goes to the Board of Finance.
I very much appreciate the Board in terms of, you know, our, our debt service and the financial aspects of it, wanting that Board to have approval, but just in terms of projects that we should be looking at, I think the Board of Select Persons, that changes, that language changes, should have an initial review and give feedback to the administration before the waterfall is finalized and goes to the Board of Finance. I debated even changing that language to kind of add detail on the capital planning workshop, to include the RTM representation as well, but displayed in the process, at least by adding the Board of Select Persons, I think that, uh, that kind of soothes it and then we'll just continue on as we've been doing and leave it in the hands of the Board of Finance in terms of moving it forward.
Yeah, and, and, and I'm not, I'm not debating with that, that's a, a bad idea by any stretch of the imagination, I just wanted to be clear of that. So the path, the way we wrote it was first selectman to the Board of Finance, now it's first selectman, Board of Fin, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance.
Yeah, it's really review, I don't even have approval with Board of Selectmen because I appreciate that it could be taking some time and there's the financial aspect of it. I mean, I'll leave it to my colleagues if they want to get more robust in the language, but, um.
I think that's a good add. You mean, the, you know, you just, you, you, it would include one Board of Selectmen meeting, right? But, I mean, you guys meet twice a month, so it shouldn't be a big deal. And, and like you said, if you're not voting on it, if it's more of a, the first selectman kind of giving you the opportunity to make comment on it, then I think, I think that's a good add.
And that was the procedure this year. We asked for it to be on an agenda this summer, so we could give feedback, and I think that we actually did give some projects that we thought should be added, which I appreciate to get added, so it was.
I appreciate that, it adds clarity so that we don't need to debate it, you know, it'll happen automatically.
And it's one more opportunity, I think, for the public to appreciate how the process works and give an opportunity for them to give feedback.
It's not unreasonable at all.
Well, I think that's a good add, I really do.
I agree, it makes a lot of sense, just to your point, Ms. Vitale, on the fact that the RTM in the process, that was the only additional public comment that we've gotten in the last month about adding the RTM on the Board of Selectmen review. So more consideration there, if that's something you do want to.
I may.
That, that definitely makes it a much longer timeframe in scheduling of meetings.
Chris, do you know if it's in the charter, what we've been doing forever is the joint, you know, waterfall meeting, that's just something that people do.
No, it was, in fact, funny story, Mary LeClaire was the, the founding member that came up with the waterfall approach and it's been an ad hoc process since probably, uh, 2009 maybe? It's definitely, there's nothing in the charter. This is the first time, Brenda, that we're actually memorializing this and, and, and making it a very formalized process, which I, which I think it, it certainly should be.
And that doesn't preclude the RTM from coming and listening, and, and the first selectman can do what, what other first select people have done in the past, where they have a joint meeting, let people review the waterfall, have, give feedback, because then it just makes it less arduous when you actually bring one of those items for votes for capital.
And ultimately, they're all going to vote on it, the projects anyway, I mean, it's just, it's a plan, right? You know, if you say, build, build a new schools in the plan and everybody says, great, and then the RTM says, no, thank you, and we don't build school, right?
Right, you want buy-in on these big items.
Yeah, and all, and all the individual items have to go through the process individually as well.
It's just a forward-looking document, so when, when Mary originated it, we were having a discussion about, wow, we're not so sure if we need twenty million dollars in the bank or fifty million dollars or a hundred million dollars. We weren't even thinking about things like trunk lines and fifty, eighty million dollars, right? But, but that, that was one of the consider, when that started coming up, we were like, man, we should be thinking about this in more of a five, ten, fifteen, twenty-year outlook because five years is like, you know, five years is like tomorrow, right? You need like a fifteen-year outlook, so that was the whole, again, hundred percent credit to Mary LeClaire for, 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 for birth in this process and, and now it's being memorialized, so maybe we should make this the Mary LeClaire Charter Amendment. She would deserve that recognition, frankly.
If the RTM wanted to memorialize the process more, they could handle that through ordinance?
Correct.
Yeah.
I mean, for timing, because I know that it, it was, this workshop was historically in September, I think during COVID and your administration, it got moved to February, I mean, and I'd be hesitant to put dates in the charter and really try to put that, so. I think, I think there's more to have this discussion in terms of capital planning in general, but, um.
Yeah.
So what is your motion exactly?
My motion was, um, to add, to change the language to include Board Selectmen review of capital plan in six-point-two-A8, so the sentence would re-prepare and maintain a ten-year capital plan and submit annually to the Board of Select Persons for review prior to submittal to the Board of Finance for its approval of such plan for the next fiscal year. So I'm adding, um, the Board of Select Persons for review prior to submittal, that clause into the existing language before us.
Any?
Yeah, we're voting now, I think so, public comment and.
Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, back to the board, any further comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The vote is unanimous, thank you for that.
Sure.
Thank you for the robust discussion, everyone, I think it was, this is a good move. Thank you. Any other comments on the charter or questions? Yes, Ms. Vitale?
I'd like to make a motion to revise the language on ex officio status for chief operating officer. In that section, it's nine-point-one-fourteen-B, it's page thirty-three on the Red Line version. I would strike the all boards, commissions and committees and would just say ex officio member without a vote on the RTM, given Ms. Wacherman's comments that she felt it would be helpful, that the RTM would rely on having the CIO, Ms. COO, whatever the title may be, at that meeting. Turns out to the RTM last night and Mr. Becker was actively participating, so not comfortable with everything, but do you see the value for the RTM?
Second, may I ask you to consider whether, young man who was here at the last meeting, Paul, I think his name was, he said, well, how about at the request of the first selectman, specifically, you know, to the chair of the commit, uh, board or commission, if the first selectman cannot attend, could I, would you be amenable to me having the ability to email, you know, Board Chair and say, you know, I can't attend the meeting tonight, I think it would be helpful to have the chief operating officer act as ex officio at this meeting?
I, um, I guess I'm just struggling with what the language would look like and I would defer really, I guess, in terms of delegation. I mean, you have the power to delegate right now and I would think, I would hope that in our government, that you should be able to, if you can't attend a meeting and there's something that you want to give comment and you call a chair of a board and say, I want to send somebody, they would be open to that. But I would be open to, if you can't attend, that delegating that, having a first select person delegate that to, well, really, I mean, any, I guess, I guess that.
Bill, is that something that would be normally specifically in a charter, that kind of specificity or?
No, but if, if I may, we've, we've spoken about this delegation authority, right, first selectman, and I can't remember, I'm, I'm desperately trying to find it, I'm not having any luck, but there, there was some vigorous debate about the ability for the, 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 uh, ability of the first selectman to be able to delegate authority. I think that kind of covers it.
Yeah, that's at six-point-two, A7.
A7, have the ability to delegate such, yeah. Now, this to, to appropriate, necessary to appropriate town officers and he's a, this COO will be a town officer, yeah?
Yes, so I mean, that's, was one of my questions.
I would think that would cover.
Last meeting, it now would be department head too, right? Town officer?
Well, not every department has a town officer.
No.
Town officers are in charter positions.
But the COO would be, would be a charter position.
So, Chris, Chris is right, I mean.
And that's what I, I asked for last meeting, I thought that it would be covering, it would still give you some, the first select person responsibility.
Right. So, it's not like I have to ask, I can just say, I will be delegating my authority to the COO at tonight's meeting, if I can't make it. Okay, that's fair enough, I, I appreciate that, thanks a lot, Chris.
Sure. I know, I know there was, I, I'm, I have, I don't know if I'm recalling a hundred percent correct, but the, um, I can't think of the lady's name who's running WPC.
Shogor.
Shogor, I think there was, um, there was some discussion about the desire to have the COO there for, you know, that, but I think, I think we changed the language so that it said someone from the, the Board of Selectmen and, and I know, uh, select person Vitale is, is on that board, right? So I guess we, that, that doesn't really, yeah.
Well, and there's a town actually here as, and also if that goes forward.
I'm not, I'm not trying to dissuade you from, from changing, making your changes, Selectman Vitale, but I, but I think, Select McGurber, I think you're, I think you're, you're covered under that, and again.
That sounds good.
Talked that nauseam about this delegation clause, believe me, yeah.
Under, under that scenario, like, if any board or commission wanted someone to come to provide more information, they may not have ex officio status to be able to sit at the table and talk as a member, but any commission could say, hey, we want the COO at our meeting to describe something.
Yeah, that's more likely to be the case.
Similar to what we're doing right now.
So is your motion to?
So my motion.
To revise ex officio status for COO except for.
RTM.
So that, more what it was before?
So basically.
Kind of, was the charter before?
Position wasn't in the charter?
No, but I mean.
So right now, it's just given.
Ex officio, it's not ex officio, it's just at the request of, and that means they don't go into executive session and all that.
Well, for this, I would, I'm suggesting for the COO, this person would be ex officio without a vote for the RTM.
RTM only.
RTM only.
Okay.
Got it.
Any public comment?
Any comments from the public on this?
I know.
Back to the, back to the board, you ready to vote? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous, thank you. Thank you for another robust discussion. What's next on your list?
Well, if I may suggest, is this really relating to this topic we just had, the ability to delegate select persons? So Vitale's going to go right there.
Yeah. Make a motion to retain the current charter language regarding delegation of authority to select persons. Section six, two, A7, recommending adding to the Board of Select Persons, so that sentence read, have the ability to delegate such authority as may be necessary to the Board of Select Persons, and then continues on, inappropriate town officers. Just want to add it, just being that we are the executive body, as a little reminder, just to, no digs against the current or former first select person, but just that the Board of Selectmen should be viewed as a body to be delegated if the first selectman is not available.
So I think, I think what, that came up at charter and the select persons are town officers.
We are, does it make it, I know, but I feel that I really wanted to be, Board of Select Persons should be named as not, being that we are elected officials and in certain instances, um. I think that certain authorities should be delegated to elected officials first, prior to another town officer. I know it's somewhat duplicative. I, I think it's just by naming it, and for the public's sake, realizing the role that we play in delegation of authority. I mean, granted, I'm on the Board of Select Person, so I would hope that we would be one of the first calls that.
What is the motion?
Just adding the Board of Select Persons, even though we're covered under town officials, so it really doesn't, it just kind of adds maybe priority more.
I think in order of clarity, though, you'd actually be not removing it. Because today, 2006 Charter does name select persons. So we would essentially not be removing that, and we would be adding that.
Yeah, well, we.
Yeah, well, it's just.
To the draft report, just adding, we would just add that.
Yeah, let's press the draft report change, please, yeah, right. So you're looking for a hierarchy more than anything, right?
Selectment. A little bit more of a hierarchy. I mean, and I know that in certain instances, the Board of Selectmen may not be the right person for the First Selectman to delegate to, that it may be a Department Head. But I think then in some instances, depending on the issue, if you're say the Board of Selectmen votes, we've taken action. And now, an issue needs to be, go before other town bodies or to the public, and the First Selectman can't be there to advocate for a position. I think the Board of, potentially, a Selectman might be the appropriate person to represent the First Select Person for action taken by the Board of Selectmen.
Do you mean, do you want to say the Board of Selectmen, or do you want to say to the Select?
To the Board of Select Persons. Appropriate town officer.
You want it to be, you want it to be the Select Persons.
Or the Select Persons.
Are you talking about an individual delegation or a delegation to a body?
Oh, yeah.
No, you want individual person.
I got you. Select person.
It should be, and then two select persons.
I would actually change the current link to a select person. Like currently, currently, it actually reads as delegating to like.
The whole Board of Selectmen.
Which I don't think is the intent.
No, I don't think, no, no, I don't think it's the intent either.
But for meetings over eight hours.
I mean, if you think it's really not necessary, I'll.
I mean, I think the Select Persons, there are town officials, I mean, you guys could say it, in addition to the fact that they're covered. This, this did come up at one of your meetings.
Yeah, because the, the Select, well, it says Selectmen in the current Charter, it does say there's a delegation. And I think we defaulted to town officers because it was a broader term. But, I mean, I, I mean, I do see Selectman Vitaly's point, so it may say, and I think you're talking about 6.2A7, right? Have the ability to delegate to a, sorry?
To. Yeah.
6.2A. The, 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 the line in, the, the verse I just quoted on the last one, with the delegation, right?
Yeah.
Jason's point.
I, I actually am not sure that Selectmen are currently included in town officer. So if you want to do it, I think I would. It's town official. You're a town official.
They went back and forth, and then you changed it at that meeting.
You're a town official.
Trying to pull one over on us.
Other than as an.
An officer, it says, other than as a member of an authority Board or Commission, so. So yeah, do you, if you want Selectmen to be included.
Yes, I want Selectmen to be included.
I make it singular, like I use select person.
Select person, okay.
So you want to say something like, have the ability to delegate to a select person as may be necessary, or as a second.
Have the ability to delegate such authority as may be necessary to a select person.
See, you can't just say or, because then you can just, well, I think you want to say, you want to have the ability to, I think what you're saying is, you want to, you want the, the First Selectman to look at the Select Persons first and say, I am going to give you the first opportunity to delegate, and if you guys can't do it, I'm going to give it to a town officer.
You guys might go to a lot of meetings.
No, 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 I really just wanted to, I mean, maybe I went back, was going back and forth, and realized that we weren't on the town officer list. Because this has been keeping this, my running list. So, what if I, have the ability to delegate such authority as may be necessary to a select person or appropriate town officer? Does that work? Sign.
Do you want the word appropriate in there?
That was just in the, I think that's in.
Yeah, it's already, that's already in there.
Define appropriate.
Yeah.
Town officer. Yeah, but I mean, I don't think it really modifies it too much, because I doubt the First Select Person would say, I would have.
No, but maybe, maybe the Commission or Board they're going to says that person's not appropriate.
Then a building official to a finance meeting. I mean, this is giving, we're giving some, we might have given a lot to, I think.
You got the point, Phil.
You get it.
It's clear.
Okay, all right.
I think you need to vote.
Need to vote.
Okay, any other, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you.
I just go through these emails that the Charter Commission got. Did you guys, I didn't read through, did you guys include this mask by the Solid Waste and Recycling Chair?
We discussed it, but we'd not include it, no.
Which, which recommendation was that?
The elector suggestion to add the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee to the Charter. And my, my point there, Chair, was that we discussed it and did not elect to make changes by adding or removing commissions.
Correct. Correct, yep.
I don't think it's necessary. We have the solid waste, such are active.
We discussed darn near every input that was, that was given to us. Yeah.
A suggestion that maybe another topic to discuss, if I may, would be, you're in the First Select Person's duties. There were some questions and discussion last few meetings around 6.2A10 about having, shall have the powers and duty conferred on the Select Person, First Select Person or the First, First Selectman by ordinance. The intent of that was to ensure that past ordinances that provided powers to the First Selectmen would still be enforced, assuming the change goes to a select person. It was pointed out that potentially this could be read in a way where the RTM could pass by ordinance changes to what the authority of future-looking changes of what the authorities of the First Select Person could be, which is not the intent.
So I think most to add effective date of ordinance of ordinances to better indicate intent of the, well, that's not it. Basically, add revise 6.2A10, which shall have powers and duties conferred upon the First Select Person or First Selectman by ordinance, and then add passed prior to ratification of this Charter, is that on whatever date?
No, that's what you don't want.
We don't?
It's the exact opposite. You want, I, I thought the intent of that was that the new Charter is going to say, select person all over the place. And then, and then, so the day this passes, you're going to have a, a, a body in the Charter called the Select Persons, and then you're going to have a body in all, every ordinance up until that, up until that point, that says, select men. And the whole intent was, so, I think, and Phil, tell me if I'm wrong, we wanted the select person and select men to be synonymous as far as ordinances. Going forward, every new ordinance that the, the RTM generates will say, select persons, right?
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, though. So it would be, they'll have the powers.
You got to do it backwards.
Yeah, but, but if you, but if you restrict it that way, you're saying that the RTM, the RTM would lose the power to basically do that in the forward by ordinance. That, that would be a change.
That would be.
Oh, that's not the intent.
No, that's not the.
Definitely not.
But that is what.
Well.
The RTM might have something to say about that. Not being able to pass ordinances.
Because the thing is, what if, for example, what if there's this new statute that's passed, but it requires an enabling ordinance? You're saying the RTM would be unable to pass that ordinance unless the Sir Selectman has those powers. Like, I, I just, I don't think there's a reason to do that. And, and then the, the change here, the only change here, I think, was to add, as Chris said, to add Select Person, and the reason for that is that's the new term, but we have to include both because, for the reason Chris said.
Right, okay.
I know.
Really, Jack.
Jacobson, they had, Jacobson thought there was some, some grand control scheme here to, to take away all the Select Person's power by, by doing this, but I, I frankly, and, and I know Commissioner Kreschik does understand the point, but me frankly, I that was definitely not the intent. I don't know who would, who would ever interpret it.
To be fair, Commissioner, I don't think she thought there was a scheme. I thought, I think she was worried that you know, if, if these things are in place for 20 years, and that it would be a possibility, and she wanted to make sure that that was not a possibility, that the Selectman's powers could be stripped by ordinance, yeah.
We add this clause.
Get at it, yeah.
This is 100% add because the town attorney brought before us and said, hey, by the way, you're going to have, you're going to have two documents, a Charter and, and a bunch of ordinances that talk about two different names.
I think we could fix it just with a language change.
Well, and that's what I, that's what I thought that this was added, was to basically make sure that, you know, if all the ordinance, the codes weren't changed, that it would still be, even though we're calling it Select Person now in the new Charter, there's still select, for Selectmen in the code. So that's what I thought the intent was, which leads to my motion.
Maybe we can draft it a little better.
We could draft in a way that, for the purposes of this Charter, the term.
Well, it's not the Charter that, it's more of.
Oh, which is the order, it's the order?
Right, right.
Because we say, going forward, the term First Select Person and First Selectmen are synonymous, and Select Person and Select Man are synonymous in the Charter and the, in any ordinance? Is it that simple? Because that's what we really want.
I mean, that sounds like the intent, yeah.
So we, couldn't we have the town attorney come up with some confirmation?
The town attorneys.
Yeah, sure. I mean, that's.
Yeah, what are we paying you guys for?
We did this for the Board of Select Persons, so we, we, we created language, it's on page 17, and it says, and I think we need to be done, like, adding this to the First Select Persons. It says, the Board of Select Persons shall have the powers and duties vested in and conferred upon a Board of Selectmen by the general statutes or by ordinance, except those expressly vested in the First Select Person by this Charter or by ordinance, and except expressly modified by the Charter. So we added language to the Board of Select Persons section of the Charter to encompass, hey, you guys have all the power that the Board of Selectmen has. I think you just take that same language and add it to the First Select Person section of the Charter. And that sort of.
Close, okay.
That's 6.2A.
So it's in 6.1 currently.
Right.
For Board of Select Persons.
But then for the First Select Person.
Which has a 6.1 which?
6.1.
6.1C, yeah, like the second. So essentially use that language.
We just missed for First Select. The same concept.
Okay.
But that would, I think the change that would be needed for that is to 6.2A.
Right.
Right. So that, that's kind of, it's a related but separate issue to the
Finishing?
It, it is, because it deals with the powers of the, it deals with the, the powers vested in the First Select in the general statutes.
We include ordinance.
Or by ordinance.
Or by ordinance.
6.1, we include.
So in the spirit of specificity.
You had to have both, right?
Six points. We're looking at 6.1C, because our template.
6.2A10, a change, right?
Yes, 6.2A.
10.
So it's the leading 10, I think, and then adding the language from 6.1.
6.1C, adding it to 6.2A.
Oh, okay.
Well, yeah, the, essentially replacing 10.
Well, but the, so I think the change has to be in A, because that's where the reference is to the general statutes.
Ah, okay.
So that was Jason's point to be consistent.
I see your point.
Because you want to make sure that the First Selectman, the First Select Person has the statutory powers of the First Select. Yeah, that's how we describe in the statute, right? Same issue with the Board of Select.
Understood.
So 6.2A10 shall be stricken, right? And 6.2.
6.2A.
A.
Is revised to include the link, similar language about 6.2C. Layered to.
Starting from the executive authority of the town shall be vested.
Well, not all that language, but to use similar language that, that, you know, because that language there says, the Board of Select Persons shall have the powers and duties vested in and conferred upon a Board of Selectmen by the general statutes or by ordinance.
Okay. So, Board of Select Persons shall have the powers and duties vested in and conferred upon a Board of Select, a Board of Selectmen by the general statutes or by ordinance. So if I call that sentence A, move sentence A, or copy that, and put it under.
I don't think you have to make it so specific.
Okay. You know what we want? Okay, all right.
I already got it.
You need to vote on this? In order to vote, we need to, to.
Well, we're just sending to recommend, and then they'll come back with the language.
As long as Phil has it captured, we can discuss.
6.2A10 and revise language to mimic 6.1C.
We got it.
Any comments, any public comment on this? If you're awake, all right. Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
That was a good comment.
Thank you. Good comment, Chris.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's, that'll come. Thank you. What's next on the list? Eric, did you have something that you would like?
Eric, stop feeding them stuff, will you?
She's, she came armed and ready. She had her own list. Yeah, it's good. This isn't, this isn't our plans here. I'm doing my job here, doing my work. Trying to be.
They're going to bite us if we don't look at it, so.
Before I make any sort of motion, I just want some clarification about the job descriptions and qualifications.
Sure, I would ask the Chair to speak to that. That's a, an area of real interest for him, but adding the point on job descriptions in the Charter?
And I, I guess my question really is that certain positions are appointed by other boards and commissions. So should, in addition to job descriptions being approved by the First Selectmen, should the Town Officers Appointing Board and Commission also have, also have to approve the job description? And we, this came also during public, some, we've got an email about this as well.
Yeah, so, the, um, the, the intent to this from, from my perspective, so first off, the, the 2022 Charter Vision Commission adopted language very similar to this. In fact, I think we, I think we stole the language almost in its entirety, and I thought it was really good language. But the intent was that, especially for the role of the Director of Works, right? Rather than memorialize a very specific requirement there, was to point back to the, to the the Director of HR's office and say, you know, you, you have to go, you have to go to, you have to go to her office or his office and get a job description before, you know, to make sure someone is qualified for that specific role. For me, that filled two, that filled two groups. One, the fact that we, we haven't had a lot of good job descriptions, so it's going to force everyone to have to have a job description, right? force everyone to have to have a job description, right? And two, it takes that, it takes any mention of very specific requirements out of the charter. Now, this gets back to the fact that, you know, we haven't revised this charter in, you know, darn near 20 years. So we we wanted to take things out that were that were stagnant before, that could be put into a to it put into a place that could be more fluid. So I I know it was it was a, I think it was a late addition to say that the the first selectman had to approve the job descriptions, but I think frankly, and I don't think it needs memorializing in the charter frankly, but I think anyone, just like in business, if I if I'm gonna if I'm gonna go hire someone to work for me, you know, I'm gonna have input into that job description. Does the director of HR specifically have to have input? No. So I would think outside of the charter, anybody who has is in the chain of command of hiring that person has to have input into the job description.
Yeah, you're talking about a functioning town government should be acting that way. Wouldn't necessarily want to have to put that in the charter.
I I think I think that's a little specific, but but again, Christine, the one thing that that or selectmen by title, excuse me, the thing that that I liked about this was that it forced the process to have to have job descriptions, right? And I just thought that, you know, having a good director of HR, you know, if I were the director of HR and someone said, hey, I need a job description for a director of public works, I would I would go ask the right people.
And and I'm not debating the inclusion of it. Appreciate that. It's more that the HR director is going to be preparing this job description, the first select person is going to be approving the job description. But say, you know, the director of health, you know, the board of health appoints the director of health, but they right now, should they also be approving the job description for the position they are they are appointing and similar? So it's not for everybody, it's for those town officers who have an appointing board and commission.
How about something like it has to be approved by the first selectman and any subject matter expert, appropriate subject matter expert? Because that's a really good point, right? Because the department of health, right, or the board of health appoints the director of health, and same thing with the trust of the library trustees, right? Even though, you know, they they come up with the rules for what the librarian has to be, right?
So, I mean, I was thinking of just adding to, this is 9.1B, page 26 in the red line version. After shall be prepared by the director of human resources and approved by the first select person as well as by the town officers' appointing board and commission. And if they don't have an appointing board and commission, it's a moot point. And then I would add at the end of that section, update shall be approved by a first select person and appointing body. Just in those for those handful of positions that are appointed, just giving that appointing authority review of these job descriptions.
I think anything that.
Approval.
Anything that makes this a more robust process, which that seems to do, is is a welcome addition to the charter.
Do you guys have any issue with that, having?
Well, no, it's just any.
The board of health, but it would be conservation commission.
Yeah, just to make sure.
Yeah, and you want to.
Totally right now, says the conservation commission.
Appoints the person.
Job descriptions for officers, not for boards.
Right, right.
Yeah, for for.
What this would mean is, so.
Mean the conservation director.
Officers appointed by board of select select persons, so the internal auditor, you know, the assessor, tax collector, three ward.
Right, they would be approved by the board of selectmen.
Right.
First selectmen.
Right, but I'm I'm just saying that the conservation is in conjunction with that commission. So the first select person cannot just appoint someone based on job description. The commission has to approve as well.
Yeah, I think I think that's the point we're trying to make. If if there is truly a commission that has to that that has input, they should have, I think what what my tally's saying is, if they're gonna have input into who we're hiring, they should have input into what's in the job description.
So planning director is another one.
Yeah, there's there's four or five that that have a commission that make recommendations, right?
Right, I think, I mean, as far as my experience, I thought it worked well the way we had it with that approval process. So, for example, you know, we could just appoint whomever we wanted, there had to be a process where that commission had to agree with it, the commission handles this stuff all the time. I mean, in the case of the conservation director, we actually used a recruiting firm to go out and find us someone with the qualification, find a group of people that, and and actually in that instance, the conservation commission was very involved. They met with the recruiter, they fed the recruiter all the information that they thought the person needed to have. I gave them free rank because they're the ones who know it more greater, right? So they sat in on those, they went through the interview process, they established the questions for that individual or individuals, and they had a hand in picking the top three.
Who did?
The commission.
Yeah, and I think that process would remain.
They have to approve it, so in my opinion, why not involve them?
Well, the the charter today requires that the conservation director is appointed by the conservation commission. They approve first select person.
Correct.
Right, but this is very specific what you're asking for is whether the job description.
Right.
Written by the director of human resources and and approved by the first select person also had the job description would also have to be approved by the commission, the appointing commission or the overseeing commission. I mean, that's not really a big ask, you know, yeah.
No, in fact, in in fact, to to selectmen to selectmen cup or select person cup chick's point, if if you did indeed want to hire a headhunter to go find that person. You'd want you'd want that commission to be able to put the resume together and hand it to him and say, go find this person. I think I think it I think it makes sense. Process you you you.
Just wants the.
So you're saying for any.
I'm just saying for any.
Just for any.
Ones that have commissions. For any any position that has an appointing body that's basically needs to be appointed.
Right now, that's planning, conservation.
So the planning director, conservation director, health director, tax collector, internal auditor, tax assessor. Eric.
Taxes, there's there's not a commission.
The tax collector.
Board of selectmen. It's a board of selectmen appointment.
Okay.
There's an appointing authority. I mean, I think that is that the intent or is it?
The appointing authority.
The appointing authority, right.
Appoint the appoint.
Would be able to review the resume.
Yeah.
Review the job.
The job description.
Just the job description.
Job description.
We're saying eventually changing first select first select person approval to appointing authority.
Well, take the first select. You know, if there's some timeframe around it, then it's not gonna hurt.
Well, I I would think it really would be if like if you if we're voting on somebody, it would be good to know that they have the qualifications that we were looking for as the appointing body. It's just.
Makes sense.
And having served on the board of health and just seeing how closely, I mean, I think that they would.
I mean, the only real change would be like right now, the CFO would assume that he would have the ability to review the job description for some of their reports to him. And I guess he still would.
He still, I mean.
He absolutely would.
And you could delegate that.
Right. Okay.
I I think it's a good add, I mean, I mean.
It's not controversial at all.
Not job descriptions, robust job descriptions are never bad.
Yeah.
Right.
And to have one more set of eyes, I think it, again, I don't think there's any downside to that at all.
Right.
Yeah, I mean.
I agree, I don't think there's downside to that.
So conceptually, we're changing approval by first select person to approval by the appointing authority. Is that the.
Well, it could be just by the first select person.
I think it should be both and the approval.
As 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 well as by the town officers.
Well, I don't think you want to change what we have now with the conservation and some of the others, right?
This is this is a different section of the charter. This is only. I think I think I think Eric's I think Eric's suggestion does it because in the instances where it's there is not a board or commission, the first selectman is the appointing authority. So just saying, appointing authority covers it because it's broader than first select.
Okay. All right, approved by appointing authority.
So if there is a commission that's approving it, then it doesn't go to the first selectman? No, they have with their approval. So the commission, the commission recommends as the first select person.
I mean, I would want to see every job.
First selectman has to.
Approved by the first select person. And as well as by the towns, the town officers' appointing board and commission.
Yeah, and and like you said.
Well, I mean, you get the idea, you guys would wordsmith it more when it goes back to you. And then I would just add a sentence at the end, update shall be approved by the first select person and appointing authority.
So they can make the motion.
I I.
That's good.
I did make it.
Any any public comment? On allowing the appointing commissions to see the job descriptions and offer their expertise and tweaking it possibly? Seeing none, back to the board.
I have a question, I'm sorry, this is Prue. Can you please reread that motion because I'm very confused?
Okay. The voice from the field, all right. So right now, B, what is that, 9?
9.1B.
9.1B. It says, "The qualifications of all appointed town officers, including and in addition to those enumerated in this charter, by the general statutes or special act, shall be prepared by the director of human resources and approved by the first select person." And then we're gonna add and the appointing authority.
Thank you.
If any, yeah. There's always an appointing authority, right? So. All right.
And then at the end, Prue, adding, "Updates shall be approved by first select person and appointing authority." At the end of that same section.
Thank you.
All right. Excellent. Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye. All right, unanimous, thank you. Start doing that. Anything else?
Aye.
Couple more, I'm waiting for. You're gonna go there.
What are they, Eric?
Don't, don't ask.
I do think we should clarify how the RTM independent counsel will work. That's one, there's been a lot of discussion.
That one's difficult, yeah.
And the other one was around the potential for the RTM to lower the standards of the ethics requirements. Those are the two related to the RTM that have generated a lot of conversation in the last few meetings.
I I thought I I I read these comments recently about the 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 legal counsel on the RTM. I think it's getting way too specific. I thought we really wanted this to be at like a 50,000-foot level. The RTM needs a lawyer, they can have one. And now we're getting into very specific language. I think it's a it's a slippery slope, but I mean, I'll defer to our our town attorney and our our CRC attorney for their comments, but I seem to get.
Go ahead, Karen.
Say, the issue is that as we started to come up with the specifics for the rules to regulate for the RTM, we realized that any any RTM in the future can form, change the rules to regulate to say, we can hire a lawyer anytime we want if we don't like something the town attorney said, or if we, you know, it could become a very broad purpose and a kind of a weapon, political weapon, or a weapon against the administration. So we actually would like a little more constriction in the charter to say that if it could be limited to when the RTM needs an attorney and the town attorney is not available, is one suggestion we have. So it might be like an ordinance, I welcome your, some kind of like an ordinance that needs to be reviewed and it can't be, or what do you think, Phil, if I can ask, I'm sorry?
Yeah, how about how about kicking the can down the road and saying something like, "The RTM may request an attorney, you know, under guidelines or rules as promulgated by the RTM."
That's the issue, Karen.
Yeah, I mean.
That's the issue, right?
Why not put in a super majority vote?
Of what, of the RTM?
The RTM can hire an attorney if the RTM has a majority vote of 75% or some number.
Well, like right now, the Democrats have a super majority. And even we think that would be fair if we hired an attorney for some political purpose. We would win the vote because we have a super majority, but I don't know.
I came to this whole conversation, I didn't think any of the town boards or anybody needed the town attorneys, they have town attorneys.
Right, right.
And no one came to the came to our meetings to say, we don't think the town attorneys are doing a good job, or we don't think they're not representing us, or they're not giving us good opinions.
Because you've only seen Phil Pierce.
Well, you know, and and that's true, but but, you know, I asked the question, the conservation commission wanted their own attorney, another commission wanted their own attorney, I mean, all the public comments. And I and I asked the question, are they complaining that the town attorneys aren't representing them?
No, the the issue is, so we we prepare ordinances, which to me is maybe the most important thing RTM does, and we had some situations in the past where we needed an attorney to help us prepare the ordinance, bless it, do some research maybe. I mean, as it as it is now, lawyers on the RTM mostly do the work, and really, we'd feel better if it was blessed by the town attorney, but, you know, we're told he was not available.
Let me just say a pretty good example was, there was a town attorney that ruled that a select person should not be able to hold that position. Like a select person resigned and another one was appointed in a way that some people in town objected to, and the town attorney ruled that that person should not have been sitting. It was in court for months and months and months. It created some, it wreaked some havoc in that, but it was finally overturned by the Supreme Court. You know, there had already been a lot of rulings that had been made, votes that had been taken during that year. And, you know, if this were in place, I would assume that the party who felt aggrieved would have asked for a town, another attorney to make a rule.
Well, that's where we worry about it perhaps being politicized if it's the RTM asking for, you know, we don't agree with what that town attorney said, so we think the town should pay for another attorney. I don't know if that should be, I I don't know, I think that's something to discuss, at what point should the RTM be able to hire an attorney when they think there's a mistake made? I mean, I've also experienced that where I thought the town attorney was wrong and but, you know, I couldn't get the RTM to hire a lawyer or something, or, you know. Well, I think we talked about it our last meeting, that, you know, it can be weaponized if if people want it. It's just, listen, this was a big push when a different leader was in office and the RTM really wanted an attorney bad, and they don't want it anymore. They want it just for ordinances. It it can be weaponized. I think that when the new administration comes in, a new attorney, town attorney, brings in other attorneys to help the conservation commission, to help this one, to help that one, that's what they did. And I think if the RTM needs help with an ordinance, which you want it written by an attorney because you want it to be appropriate, you could always say to the town attorney, if you can't do it, can someone in your firm help us? So it so it's right, and we're not making something, you know, we're not putting something in there in unintended consequence of some sort. I think it makes sense, like you were saying, Karen, and I think we got some emails as well from RTM members who agreed that it should be specific for ordinances. And to your point, the RTM, that is one of their most important roles is to write ordinances that have real impact on our town operations, you know, they could write an ordinance, you have to shut your lights off at 10 o'clock. And it could be we need ordinances, it could be we need legal advice on whether we should do an ordinance, or I don't know.
All right. So the I think most legislative bodies don't have the independent ability to hire counsel. One that I am aware of is that the Board of Representatives in Stanford does, so I just looked at their charter. So I just looked at their charter. So their charter requires the affirmative vote of 31 of the 40 members of the Board of Reps to authorize the hiring of separate counsel for the Board of Reps. So.
For any reason, basically.
It's not, it's not limited, but it's, but that's a high threshold. That's like 70, that's 77 points in 55%.
Yeah, 75.
It's a high threshold, so that's what, and it's, the authority is with respect to a specific case or controversy. Member's opinions, paring proceedings, and they can appropriate them.
Your RTM has been in the news quite a bit over the last couple of years.
That's, that's.
A lot of arguing going on up there, a lot of controversy.
The budgets is separate. But, I, so, I mean, I don't have, I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other on this. I'm just pointing out.
So that's sort of what you were suggesting.
I'm not aware of.
I got on board, Karen. I decided through the conversation, okay, the RTM then should have this privilege. And then the conversation led to, well, how do we regulate it? And I'm like, boy, that's a ticket we don't want to get into. The RTM should be able to figure out their rules and procedures.
I like, I mean, I like that because.
What, 75%?
Yeah, because then, if that's the only limitation, then they could hire for some other reason.
Yeah, but it's also, it's, that requirement is, it requires the affirmative vote of 31 members. So it's not a supermajority or 75% of the members that appeared and voted at the meeting.
Right, true.
It actually requires of the entire body.
Right.
That is a, that's a, that, I think, that's a high threshold that I think.
The whole president accounts for.
Weaponization of it.
Newtown is a small division. The legislative council on the vote of eight members of 12, the charter says eight members can, it says hire an attorney to furnish legal services to the council.
Where's that, Jason?
But that's, that's two-thirds, right?
That is two-thirds. But it's, like Phil said, for the, it's a, it's a specific number.
Two-thirds of the body.
Of the entire body.
So, right, so if you have six people show up or whatever, and it's here, seven, it's unanimous. Doesn't matter.
So maybe that's the reason they haven't written that one.
It is that one, yeah.
To make it super hard, whereas the discussion that we had last go-around was specifically for ordinances. You wouldn't necessarily need to have that large of a threshold to meet. I mean, I'd rather see the RTM have access to legal assistance without having to get this whole big number.
Yeah, but the protection.
I, I, I agree.
Party, because then if it's not, if it's something controversial.
Correct, that's true, too.
Then they're not going to get the votes, so.
I gotta tell you, I'm, I'm beginning to defer to Commissioner McEnery's original position, which is, why does the RTM need this? If the body, if the very body that we're trying to get this representation to is worried about these kind of things right now.
Well, that's why we'd like it at least, I mean, we had prior attorney who wouldn't, who wouldn't look at some ordinances and we needed to get them done and we wanted the town, I mean, that was like a kind of a, we didn't know what to do. We have to count on the town attorney. This would not happen with Phil and Jason. But, so that was, that was a situation where at least we can, we can point to the ordinances part. But, and then, but you've raised issues where, you know, it could be, it could be a broader need, but then it becomes political, so.
How many years have you been on the RTM?
Ten.
You've been on 10, I was on 10, and I definitely understand why people would ask for this. Having been on the other side of this and wished that I could have gotten some legal advice when somebody gave an opinion that I thought was too political. And it really, I think this would actually make it less political, not more political. There's some tricky situations that require interpretation. Not everything is cut and dry and obvious. And there's a lot of room for interpretation. I've been on the end of decisions that were interpreted in such a way that hurt me personally, like, yeah, yeah. Like.
Can we have a town attorney? Then why do we have a town attorney?
The Board of Selectmen, right? I mean, we have discussions about things, should, you know, should the Board of Selectmen have their own attorney?
It can be said, except it's usually, I think with the RTM.
And then do we have the attorney that is picking, is it now battling with the town attorney over whatever it is?
Yeah.
I mean, you're saying Stanford is the only one that you can, in Newtown?
Just identify Newtown as well.
But you're saying the language in Stanford is very precise, and I'm not sure if Newtown has it.
It's similar, it's eight out of.
Eight out of 12.
No matter who shows up.
Right.
So it has to be of the body number.
Eight members have to vote in favor.
Phil said a six show up and you got a unanimous vote, it's still no good.
Correct, and same with Stanford. It has to be the 40 members.
Right, with Stanford, it's a 40-member body, so 21 members would be a quorum. You get 21 show up, they all vote in favor, it's unanimous.
So we have a 40-member body.
So you can make it 31.
Pretty high standard.
It's a high standard. I don't think you'd have any.
I think it's a.
Weaponization.
That way is good, however, you still have the opportunity to ask for help with ordinances.
Sure, you do, and.
Without having to have a whole big vote, unless to Phil's point.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Until Phil's point, it's controversial. And, you know, some members don't want the ordinance or.
Well, also, I think in terms of availability, when you have a big firm like Coen and Wolf, you're going to have other attorneys who can help.
Yeah, that has changed things a bit.
Yeah. Well, that, so maybe.
You want to try to adopt the language that Stanford has?
I'd be good with that. I think it would make a lot of RTM members happy. I think it would, it definitely is, it helps balance the power a little bit, you know. Because having a legal opinion is powerful. And I love, you know, having a legal opinion, it's my way, but, you know. And on the other side of that, where I've thought, I've looked at legal opinions and thought, what? Can't be serious, you know, and it's real important, you know.
But you're undermining, you're undermining the authority of the town attorney to a certain degree. I mean, I'm good with the 31 of 40, right? But I got to tell you, if this, if the intent of this is every time the town attorney says, yep, it's black, and we want to get an attorney to say it's white, then that is, that is not right. Now, if it's the intention of Commissioner Whackerman, which is, we really need you to look at some ordinances, and you're like, town attorney's like, I'm a little too busy, but 31 of us want another attorney to look at it, I'm in, I'm in favor. But, but boy, it is a slippery slope to just bring in a, bring in another attorney to overrule the ruling of the town attorney. Really slippery slope, I think.
I think that would rarely happen. And it would more often be ordinance or, or we, you know, we're discussing such and such, and we really need to know if that's legal and could be.
Yeah. Okay.
Option, if 31 out of the 40 people think, then you still have to get the money for it. So that is another.
Right.
The other option would be if you wanted to restrict it a bit more, you could say, something like the public comment submitted by Mrs. Zima, that the RTM may engage an attorney when the town attorney is unable to assist with legislative items related to the duties of the body by a vote of 31, at least of 31 or more of the members. You could do something like that, where it's, hey, they, they don't have time for you, and it still requires a supermajority.
That would eliminate the ability to hire someone to get a counteropinion, though.
It would, right.
That's the question.
Yep, okay.
You either, you guys have philosophical issues with this? This is a big mistake, based on your experience.
If you answer that, I'll be surprised.
Nobody answered for you?
If you answer it the wrong way, we're going to hire another attorney.
I defer to the town attorney. I really, I really do.
Good answer, Jason.
I don't have strong feelings about this one.
Yeah, I don't think it'll be used often, if at all. I think having the ability to do it. I think I would have liked having that ability, at least knowing it was there.
So the language that Stanford, you want to try to adopt that language? Want them to look at that?
Yeah, I'm good with that language. It sounds pretty like a high standard, yeah. Doesn't speak to the budget, but.
I just want to be, so Stanford does allow them to appropriate it, money, but you're not talking about that.
Okay.
Talking about the number, the affirmative vote that's required.
Stanford has language for appropriating it?
Yes, but they, they may not have a separate Board of Finance, the budgetary function, they don't have a Board of Selectmen, so the whole budgetary function of the town neighbor side is for the Board of Reps. I don't know if they have a Board of Finance.
They have a taxation, I think, Board of Taxation of the, of the sub-council.
Yeah, I think it's a sub-body, yeah.
Right. Oh, I mean, finance, budget.
Do you guys need to?
Yeah. Can we just say we're going to adopt Stanford's? I would like to make them, recommend adopting, I'd like to make a motion to adopt language similar to Stanford's, which permits the RTM to hire third-party legal counsel with a vote of 31 of the 40 members of the RTM.
Second that?
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board.
I would just say that the language would be exactly.
So, so the, one thing I want to point out is, so the size of the RTM is not dictated by the charter, it's up to 56, right? So I, we'll have to, we'll have to craft language, but the concept will be that number threshold, but the affirmative vote of that many members, not those, not that percentage of the members present in voting. That'll be the difference.
You could do a percentage of the entire membership.
So, yeah. Whatever the time, Karen, you know how the RTM is.
We'll get back to 10%, or no greater than 10%. Get there right away. You can go around on that again.
Don't go there.
Well, just wind me up, Chris.
Yeah, I know, I know, Jared.
So that's 77.5%, right? So should we just say 77.5% of the RTM members of, of the RTM, present of the body?
Of the entire membership.
Of the entire membership.
Maybe you should say at the time, because.
The entire elected body of the entire.
Entire membership is.
Whatever it is.
It's whatever it is.
Gotcha.
Okay. Ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Wow, unanimous. Thank you very much. I think.
You have more, Christine? Did you say, oh, no?
I was just joking.
I, I have a question. Under, for the compensation of the Board of Select Persons, comprised of one Republican on the Board of Finance and one Democrat? Any concern if there's a member that's not a Republican or Democrat that serves on that board serving? So I'm wondering if it should be one member appointed by the Republican Caucus and the Democratic Caucus on each bot, on each board?
Well, that.
And I'm not, I'm just cut one for clarity.
We, we just adopted what the current ad hoc policy is. I don't know, I don't know what the difference is. I mean, I served on, I served on two compensation commissions, you will board, whatever they were. And I mean, yeah, we, we just said, who wants to do this? I raised my hand and the Republican Caucus said, yep, and same thing with John Matola, got, you know, got pushed forward, so.
I think you could, you could make that change. This is right, this was just meant to adopt the current practice, and it's voted on by the Board of Selectmen.
All right, that's probably, that's probably not worth making it. I mean.
I think it's worked.
I think it's, I think it's actually worked really well, that's why.
No, I think, and I'm not, I think it has too, it's just more if you, there are other parties. If there's, if there's a member that's unaffiliated or independent, that based on the way this one Democrat renamed the party. So if somebody who's not a Democrat and not a Republican, they wouldn't be eligible.
Do you want to take out Republican and Democrat and put different parties, or some words like that?
I really think that the partisan, it being balanced from a partisan perspective is really important to ensure.
I can't, I really can't remember the last time an unaffiliated.
Again, just really bringing it for discussion.
For any time. Which is unfortunate.
We did discuss this, actually, when we put this in.
Absolutely.
Okay. And then, we've gotten a number of emails about sunsetting things to ordinance. And I'm not, the only thing that I just, if there was any discussion about WPCA, which I think is a great ad, if that potentially, some of that language should be sunset to ordinance, and really questioned for my colleagues, seeing that it seems like every day there's new information about.
WPCA.
Yeah, just our needs for that, for the facility.
But why do you need something in the charter to sunset something to ordinance then? Because the RTM could, could create an.
Well, then I think that an ordinance would replace the charter language.
Right, and you would force that by saying it'll sunset within a certain.
You have, you have the reorganization provision that allows you to reorganize departments. So, I mean, that requires action by the Board of Selectmen and the RTM. That is available to amend the charter without a charter amendment, essentially. I think on the WPCA, they, I think the administration, both the administration and the WPCA advocated for those changes because they wanted it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They wanted it in the charter so that it can't be taken away.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think the question of sunsetting charter stuff into ordinance, it does force the issue after a certain number of years, like you have to do it. But I don't know why you would have to do that, like how that would be helpful. If someone wants to do it, they'll take the lead, like all ordinance.
But if it's, but if it's sunsetted to an ordinance, then the ordinance could go away.
True, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I'm not endorsing it, but I think the point was not to require the sunsetting, but it was enable, it was to give the ability for it to be sunset.
I think ordinance is, everything could be sunsetted into an ordinance, right?
No, it is.
The charter, the charter rules, right?
Yeah, it can't violate the charter, so if it's an ordinance that would completely violate some section.
An example would be the seal. The seal is in the charter.
Yeah.
We are expressly giving the RTM the ability by ordinance to appoint a new seal, essentially, to determine a new seal. They wouldn't be able to do that without us essentially, essentially sunsetting the seal.
So we couldn't write a WPCA ordinance if it's in the charter?
Not if it violates. Not if it violates.
It conflicts with the charter.
Okay, okay. The order of priority is the charter prevails over, right?
So we could, we could say that, hey, these sections can be replaced by ordinance, at which time the ordinance will prevail, or something, a better language than that that Jason would provide. I'm not arguing for that, but that's the intent. The intent is to simplify it over time and shift more to ordinance. I think that opens a whole other sort of.
Is that a typical?
That would be a lot of, a lot of change. Yeah, I think the reason maybe it was brought up was because it has taken this town so long to ever get anything done.
With the charter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, maybe that's why it was being proposed to say, all right, if you're never going to pass a charter, let us change some normal things over here.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I don't think maybe, well.
I think a lot of.
If the charter goes down, it won't matter one way or the other, right? If you have this provision in there. And then I think you'd really have to spend a lot of time, you know, with the legal wording to make sure it's specific to certain things, it's not going all over the place, it's not being interpreted. Yeah, it could, it could. It could go down a lot of rabbit holes and have a lot of unintended consequences, so.
The other example is, which in there I'm guessing you might talk about, is relating to the Ethics Code and Ordinance.
Right.
I guess some of the concerns requested, or, we did actually add a sunset clause specifically for that one, recognizing that the RTM is in fact working on that. Some concerns have been expressed, but potentially, could the RTM adopt a very lax code of ethics that would, you know, reduce the standards?
Yeah, I was thinking that maybe we could have in here that no ordinance will, will have fewer, like, lower standards than what's in here, rather than just supersede.
As an example, though, of the kind of issues you run into when you start saying, hey, we could sunset. Just an example, though, of the, the kind of issues you run into when you start saying, hey, we could sunset.
Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, and really, I just, I mean, I had the, I had some concerns and I liked that suggestion, Ms. Whackerman. And WPCA, just because there was so much detail that was added, and we may not, we may, we may want more. And sunsetting to an ordinance could potentially provide that opportunity to make it more robust. And not really advocating for it, not really, kind of, not advocating for it necessarily right now, but.
Do you, by ordinance, require more of the WPCA? As long as they keep doing what they're doing, they're supposed to do in the charter, you could always ask them to do more by ordinance.
That's true. That's true.
I think a lot of those things are probably operational issues.
All right, I just wanted to raise it. To get a number of emails about that.
Yeah.
Maybe the ethics ordinance?
The ethics. I make a motion to use Ms. Whackerman's language for the ethics. Ms. Whackerman?
Oh, repeat it, sorry. That, and no, the ordinance cannot have lower standards than the existing provisions of the ethics guidelines in the charter.
That's good.
We'll do an eleven point six.
Motion?
Yeah. Second.
What Karen just read.
Karen, can you read that again?
So it would be that, that whatever the ordinance says, the ethics ordinance says, cannot have lower standards than what are in this.
Is that okay?
That's fine with me. I think it goes without saying, but, I mean.
Because it wasn't only Christine, I think other people were.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
So we have a motion in a second? Yep. Any comment? Public comment?
My comment is, an ethics ordinance requires a lot of work and will likely be significantly more stringent, you know, detailed. So this isn't, you know, likely to be an important issue that people are gonna worry about, but if, if you think this gets people comfortable, I'm all for it.
Well, I just think that being that
Yeah.
ordinance can be changed.
Right.
You want to have something that stands at least the next ten years, the standard that everybody knows is.
Any comments from the public? Campbell? No. All right, back to. I'm a bit harassing. Back to the board. Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All unanimous. Thank you. Is that it?
Well, I have one thing from my notes from last time that we discussed. Changing the unanimous approval of Ethics Commission members to majority. And I express my concern with that, because it's always been that way. And I think people have a level of trust, all members, minority and majority, because I can see scenarios on both sides where majority Republicans are ramming through their people and the majority Democrats are ramming through their people. And then no one has any faith in the people who are being appointed. And this goes back to, if it's not broke, we shouldn't fix it. And it is literally what, the only commission that requires unanimous approval. And I think we should keep it that way, so that the public has faith in, faith in the people who are appointed.
Any questions or comments on this topic?
I've been torn about this, because I agree with you. I think that we should not be political about this commission, but I also am concerned, because looking back, there's been instances where politics has gotten in the way of people being appointed and then the commission not having a quorum and not being able to function, which is not ideal.
But I think that in that, in that one instance, there was politics being played, and that's the whole point of this. Is that members, you know, opposing sides are supposed to agree and there's supposed to be collaboration and give and take. So that you're not having a board with lopsided numbers or people's friends and that kind of stuff. I think it protects the office of the first select person, whoever it is in the future, from being, from being viewed by the public as appointing with their second select person, whoever they want. And it's a bad look. I just think it's a really bad look and it's never been brought up to be changed, and I think if it's changed now, you lose, people will lose trust in, in the Ethics Commission's decisions.
Mr. Gerber? Yes, sir. So if I may, if we're gonna go, if we're gonna go down this rabbit hole that nobody wants to elect their friends or have the second selectman vote, then, then change every vote on every commission to be unanimous. I don't know why this is any different. I, I tell you how I base my vote and my recommendation on this. The fact that we can't get people to serve on boards, right? So, and I know of at least one person that could have served on this board that didn't get to, and I think it was a, I think it was a detriment to the town. So, again, that, that's just, that's just one, one-seventh of the opinion of, of this commission, but I think in the spirit of trying to make sure we've got people on boards, that, that was the reason I voted for this, to move forward the way it is.
Well, to respond, Chris, to that, this is really the only board that requires unanimous, and I think it's because it's very unique. All the other boards are making decisions that not, you know, that don't have the same breadth of what the Ethics Commission handles. And I think our community has always had faith that those people were decided upon. And I don't think it has anything to do about who doesn't get on or who gets on. People get on eventually, and I think we've had good people on it for many, many years. And I don't believe anyone's ever made an accusation about the Ethics Commission makeup. That, you know, they're handpicked by the majority on the Board of Selectmen, so they're really not that ethical or, so I just think it protects that body, and I think it gives our community faith in the process. And again, it's the only board that requires it, and it's never, ever been brought up in the history of this town to be changed.
Well, it was brought up to this commission.
No, I'm just saying in the past, all these years.
Okay. It was brought up to this commission.
It was missing a, a quorum for quite a while, right?
Yes.
And I think that that's, that's the big issue. I don't think it was that long. But again, you know, I don't wanna get into the logistics of, you know, gameplay. I think it's there for a reason and people have to work with the minority to compromise. And I think sometimes people may have forget that, or a new person may, doesn't maybe know the rules of how it goes. So I think this is a very important thing. It's enough for me to, I, I actually take a very strong stand on this. I think it's extraordinarily important for our community to feel that each person on that board has been unanimously approved. And that if we don't have it, that people are gonna lose face, faith in that, that commission.
I, I agree with the change that you are suggesting. I, I think it's the right thing to do. Things got a little ugly last year and I, it was unfortunate. I don't think it was fair, but I think it got ugly because of this, you know, unanimous rule for, that we had to be unanimous. And it did turn into how many Republicans, how many Democrats and, you know, and, and the ability to, you know, block and really, really, really solid person didn't get on because of that, and.
And a person resigned, withdrew their name because they felt very
Right.
used during that process, because, you know, agenda items were moved and, listen, I don't think we should talk about it because it's embarrassing and not.
Yeah, I thought it was embarrassing too, and I thought it was not good for the commission.
It's unfortunate that we had an attorney who was a, you know, very good, both, there was gameplay for that agenda and that should not happen.
But having been on the other side, you know, when I was in the minority on the RTM, there were people that the majority put forward. And I had to go to the RTM as well when I was on the RTM, and we never rejected. There, there were certain people that, you know, I think initially, some people wanted to reject for, you know, political reasons. They were talked out of it. They were, they were told that would be a really bad look, and the person put forward is actually a really good person with a strong ethics and that they were using the wrong litmus test to decide, you know, whether to vote for them or not. And in the end, I don't, I don't think anyone was ever, as far as I can recall, rejected from that, from the Ethics Commission until last year. And, yeah, I, I think that was a bad look and, and that we should try to figure out not, how to not let that happen again. And I think this change will will make sure that won't happen again.
You're saying the RTM was voting.
Well, also, the Board of Selectmen, a member of the Board of Selectmen was.
Because they came from a unanimous vote. I think, you know, listen, I'm a pretty common sense person, and I think that the average everyday citizen, if they hear, hey, by the way, this charter revision includes a complete change to the way the Ethics Commission is appointed.
Oh, that is unfair.
Majority vote as opposed to a unanimous vote of the entire board. And, you know, it sounds like it, it, it doesn't have a good look. It just doesn't. And, and I, you can't, I, to me, you can't wordsmith it. You really can't. I'm gonna try to.
Here's, here, here's my question, right? My question is this. You know, we say, okay, it's not broken, okay, I know, that's parroting the language I've been using for the last eight months on this commission, right? But who made this rule? There's a lot of stuff in this charter that makes no freaking sense. Two thousand and six makes no sense. And there's a lot of stuff in there that we don't follow today. So just because it's in the charter, doesn't mean it makes sense. I'm so sorry. It's our governing document and I'm, we're trying to make it better. But I, I, if I knew who thought that this was a good idea, like what body thought that this, this unanimous thing, I, I, I'd feel a lot better about it, but I don't see how this makes it better. And eh, 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 well, whatever. If we don't think people are gonna vote for it, you think, oh, okay, I'll just stop.
What, what about if you made it, I don't know if we could do this, take away the unanimous vote of the Board of Selectmen? I mean, a three-person board, I think this is a prime example of why, why it gets challenging in terms of being able to have conversations offline. It's, if you raise the threshold of the RTM's vote for approval to two-thirds, as opposed to a majority, in terms of getting more.
Yeah, and it's a majority, and to your, and to Karen's point earlier, one party has a supermajority. And, listen, we don't, people who genuinely, you know, listen, we have it right now in Washington, we have an example of that in Hartford, where, you know, the governor had to veto something that was, you know, pushed through by a majority and that a lot of people weren't happy about. Anytime a majority gets too much power and pushes something through, people don't like it. And so the reason, I believe, and I didn't write this, but whoever did, I think were smart and no one ever brought it up to change it, was because they want, never wanted the appearance of somebody picking, handpicking. So for example, if it's two Republicans and you just pick the whole Ethics Commission. And I would one hundred percent say that the DTC would be very upset. And they would say, oh, we're filing ethics complaints and jeez, none of them are getting taken up. And it's been, it's probably because the Republicans appointed all the people they wanted to be on the Ethics Commission. It's a bad look. We shouldn't touch it. And I'm not saying that because I'm in the minority, because someday this will be a different thing and someone different can be sitting there. And it, you, you have to think to the future, who will be sitting here? Who, what, what kind of, you know, ethical standards do they have? And I think we need to protect it. I think it's important. I really do.
Well, can we go back to my question about being that this is, it's not the three-person board of Selectmen that ultimately makes the decision? It's the RTM that ultimately makes the decision.
But again, if you're concerned about, if you're concerned about.
If we have a supermajority, it doesn't matter. Well, it makes it a little bit.
No, it's the same thing.
If everybody's trying to be apolitical about this and.
To leave it alone would be apolitical.
Well, except that we have instances that it, it didn't work. And when I say didn't work, having people not get appointed that were totally qualified and would have been wonderful on the commission to the commission not having a quorum and not being able to conduct business, which is a bigger issue, I think, for me, that we need to have.
Right, I agree, Christine. So if you're, if you're the leader of the town and you know that a certain board has.
Can we just go back to?
A unanimous requirement, then you need to work with a minority member. You have to work with them.
But it's, it's, you need to work with them, but you, you can't work with them because of the quorum.
If the minority, no, if the minority member says to, to the, the first select person's chief of staff or aide, this is who I would like to be put on, and I will agree to whoever you want. Okay, then you get to the meeting and someone makes a motion to change the.
I, 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 I don't need to.
Who is getting voted on first. It was a bait and switch. Don't happen.
Listen, I don't wanna go back and.
We don't have to discuss it. If you want to uncover the majority, you guys can vote for this change. I will vote against it.
I am trying, I would like to have a, I would like to have a discussion about if we want to have more buy-in of, instead of it being a majority vote of the RTM, having it be a two-thirds vote of the RTM. Yes, there's a supermajority right now and there's, but in terms.
With a unanimous vote of the Board of Selectmen?
No. Majority vote of the Board of Selectmen and a two-thirds majority vote of the RTM. So there needs to be, there needs to be more bipartisan support by the legislative, the legislative body.
Is a majority. The RTM has a two-third majority.
It just, it raises, it raises the standard and has the, it raises the threshold on a larger body.
That is part of it.
That has.
We just changed the Stanford language for an attorney. We imagined it and talked about it.
Exactly.
So if you wanna go to that.
Well, we changed.
So that they, the whole body has to be there and thirty-one members have to vote, and I'm sure people will be lining up for that ethics, you know, appointment. I mean, if you wanna do that, if we're trying to protect the integrity and we don't want inappropriate legal, you know, use of an attorney by the RTM, we just adopted language, then we should do the very same thing. Not two-thirds, it should be thirty-one members or whatever it is, the language.
I think that this situation is a bit different, because in the instance of legal, we have a town attorney. The RTM has access to legal counsel. This is in terms of, if we want to try to make this get more of a, a stronger majority for appointing these commissioners, what about raising the threshold at the RTM? The representatives of the people? So you're against that? You wouldn't?
You're not hearing me?
I am, I am hearing you. I, I feel like you're, I, I heard, I heard you about.
I don't think we're gonna convince each other, so should we go take this to a vote?
Right now on the RTM.
I think she understands.
I understand.
People aren't gonna have faith in it.
I mean, you think that people would have more faith in it.
I think people have faith in, in a three-member body making compromise and give and take and electing or appointing people that they all like and approve of, and then the RTM has to pass it by a simple majority.
I think we've been talking about this for about a half hour or something like that. Can we take this to a vote? You made the motion, right?
No, I asked, I brought it up. I didn't make a motion.
No motion.
Make a motion?
Yes. So I guess I would make a motion to restore the current charter language regarding ethics appointments. appointments.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the public?
We need a second.
Do you wanna make a second?
A second for discussion purposes.
Any comments from the public? We've already discussed this a fair amount. Any comments from the public? Judy? Seeing none, back to the board.
Just, do you have any...
Any thoughts on the...
I'd like to make an amendment to the motion to change the motion, well, actually, excuse me.
Why don't we vote on the motion and make another motion?
Do you have any thoughts on the RTM?
Yeah, as I said, on the RTM, I think that this change was appropriate, because, you know, having sat on the Board of Selectmen when I put forward an amazing candidate that was rejected because of his party, so I don't wanna go through that again. I think that, personally, I think that was more of a public, you know, the public would lose faith in this, in that body more because of what happened on that. And so I think this is a really good change, and I will vote against this motion. Can we just vote on this first? All right, any, I think we went to the public, no comments from the public, back to the board, all in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye. Oh, no.
All opposed, say nay. Nay. Abstain? Abstentions? None? So the motion fails. Would you like to make another motion?
I would like to make a motion that the Ethics, first, we're in Section 10-181, that needs to be confirmed by a two-thirds majority vote of the RTM.
Second. Any discussion? I understand Brenda's comment that the supermajority, that might not be as high as a threshold as it might normally be when there isn't a supermajority, but it is a higher standard, and what we're reaching for is a somewhat higher standard. It definitely is a somewhat higher standard. And it's two-thirds versus simple majority is a big difference in there. Any other comments from the board? Questions?
Anything am I missing here from a legal standpoint of making this change, or...
This is all policy. It's all policy decisions.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none? There's only one person that would comment on something like that. Back to the board. Okay, let's vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Abstentions? None. Okay, so this motion passes, the threshold for RTM approval for Ethics Commission members is now two-thirds.
Recommendation.
That's the recommendation. That's the recommendation. Back to the Charter Revision Commission. I exceeded my authority in that, sorry. Okay. Anything else?
I have just one, just, and I raised the Chief of Community Services position at the last meeting, and you had suggested that I reach out to the town attorney, which I did, but I wanna just close that loop at a public meeting. I was advised that, as you stated, that position does not need to be in the charter currently, and potentially does not need to be in the charter in revision, that it is a policy decision. But I just want some clarification just right now, and this is basing these comments on the presentation that Mr. Calabrese gave to the Board of Finance during the budget, that there would be a shifting of roles, that around would be the Director of Parks and Recreation, and correct me if like this is not really, and I think a lot of this was supposed to come into effect July 1st. Wait, I'm sorry?
That Anthony Calabrese is now Chief of Community Services, and he has the Director of Parks and Recreation, interim director is Galen Brown, reporting to him, and the Human Resources Director reporting to him. Human Services. Human Services, I'm sorry.
Right, we weren't gonna put this in the charter.
Right.
But, so...
You're asking why Lisa Claire is not in the charter? Communications Director?
No, no, well, no, I'm really just questioning the Director of Parks and Recreation, which, so is Galen going to be appointed? Like, you said interim. It's a first selectman appointment, and will be considered a town officer.
Director of Parks and Recreation.
And so Mr. Calabrese as Chief of Community Services would not be a town officer.
Correct. It's not a charter position.
And would it change based on what we're saying for town officers in terms of the delegation authority, if these go through, of the first selectman? Being that Anthony would no longer be the Director of Parks, and I just wanna get clarification, just so I understand how it's working.
It's not a charter position, so it's not a...
Does it change his ability, the first selectman's ability to delegate to the Chief of Community Services, being that it's not, it would not be a charter position? Because right now Anthony's the Director of Parks and Recreation, so I'm assuming that...
So he, so the, I mean, it's two different concepts, so if the question's about reporting, so my office has given a couple of opinions on this in the past, and it's consistent with practice in the town, that the first selectman does not need to personally receive reports. So there is a reporting structure where the Director of Parks and Rec reports through the Community Services Chief to the first selectman. We have intermediate administrative officials, as other administrations have had, which is consistent with that. So in terms of the language that's being added about delegation, it allows delegation to officers. The Chief of Community Services is not in the draft charter, a town officer, so it would not be a person that authority could be delegated to within the meaning of the charter.
Unless we add, add the Chief of Community Services to the charter.
Are there other aspects in the charter about town officers that it would be a problem if Anthony wasn't the town officer? I know it's mentioned a lot.
I don't, I think it's really a policy question of whether you want the position to be a permanent fixture in the charter, or an intermediate administrative position that is in the town, which is an operational decision.
That we didn't pick a charter?
No, and I just wanted, just to get clarification again, that our last meeting, you know, Attorney Pierce was not here, so I just wanted to get his comments on the public record. We did discuss it, and based on that, I think that he didn't think it needed to be in the charter, so I will not be making a motion to add it, considering that it would most likely fail, and our legal opinion is that it does not need it. And I think that, yeah, and if we can, if there's any reorganization that needs to be, if we decide that we wanna reorganize, the Board of Selectmen can take action and ask the RTM.
You want to make it permanent?
Make it permanent.
Make it permanent through the ordinance process, where it's adopted by a resolution of the Board of Selectmen, and then if you decide you wanna make the position permanent, that's always an option.
Okay. Any other questions?
I don't think so.
Those are all ones I expected.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you very much for your background. Any other questions or motions? Anything that anyone on the commission would like to say? You've been wonderful. Jerry, anything, any comments?
All good.
Eric, any comments? Chris, any closing statements?
He's getting ready for his next meeting.
Okay. Well, thank you, thank you all, thank you everyone for chiming in today and coming with your ideas. I think we are ready to, any public comment? We're ready to vote, I think, on this charter. And the, as, with the questions that we are sending back...
No, they have to come back. This is just our...
Yeah, I don't think you need another...
We don't need to vote?
No, we're done.
Send it back to you with the que, okay, we're done for the day.
They've already voted on recommendations.
On each recommendation.
We have other recommendations.
So next, you have now, how long does the CRC have? How many days?
30 days.
30 days. Eric says 30 days, so I believe you. The Charter Revision Commission has 30 days to deliberate these changes and come back to the Board of Selectmen with your recommendation, recommended changes or not.
Yes.
And then we will...
And during that time, we are, we shall confer with you.
Okay, thank you. So really, we don't need to do anything but adjourn, right?
Well, may, sorry, I stepped away for a second. May I ask just one question of our town attorney and our CRC attorney? So there's a requirement for us to coordinate, collaborate, whatever the word is, you know, in our 30 days. Didn't we just do this? So we're gonna do this again within the 30-day period? And I'm a little confused as to what we're gonna collaborate on in the next 30 days.
You're gonna take our recommendations and fit them into the charter if you see fit, right?
We're gonna meet this Thursday, and we're gonna have a write-up for absolutely everything you talked about. I'm absolutely 100% clear of that. Then there's supposedly a requirement for us to reconvene with the commission, the Board of Selectmen, the commission to meet again to collaborate, I think the word is. But it feels like that's what we did today. So if we're gonna have that meeting just to talk about the same subjects, that's fine, maybe it'll be a shorter meeting, but, and then we'll vote.
Well, you'll come up with your final recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, right?
Yes, we'll vote on it. I'm saying that there's a meeting to collaborate, and again, I don't, I didn't think that was our...
So after, after the Board of Selectmen makes its recommendations, which you just did, there were people here talking tonight and participating in that process, but you guys just made your, you know, recommendations to Charter Revision. So they, they're gonna meet and think about it, but during that process, the next 30 days, they have to confer with you. That could be a five-and-a-beating if everyone feels like you've already hashed it out, but the statute does require that you guys confer. So they may meet on Thursday, they may decide, you know what, we'd like some clarity on this retaining counsel, the supermajority, or whatever, and you guys will have a meeting to either hash out language, or say, hey, yeah, we're good with all that, you know, whatever it may be. Other members of the commission who aren't here, haven't seen your recommendations, they may have questions. And then ultimately, the commission's gonna vote to reject your recommendations, or incorporate them into a revised report that they'll send to you within 30 days. Awesome, okay.
So I'm targeting that, just for Board of Selectmen thoughts right now, I'm targeting, sorry if you see the back of my head, I'm targeting the week of the 7th of July to have that coordination meeting, or whatever that meeting is. We're gonna meet, we're gonna meet Thursday, the week of the 4th, I figure is gonna be just too, too long a putt for anyone. The week after, do you think you guys have any availability to meet that week? Is there a Board of Selectmen meeting or anything crazy that week?
The week of the 14th or the 7th.
The week of the 7th, well, the 7th or the 14th, I guess we could do either.
Well, we have a Board of Selectmen meeting on the 9th.
Okay.
Then you send an email, and we can look at our calendars at home and get back.
Well, and I know she wanted to try to...
Can the collaboration be put on the agenda of the Board of Selectmen?
I was gonna say, could that be an agenda item? Yeah, like the last...
Or what's on it.
So, yeah, you could know this, you could also know this at, or you could do it at the beginning of the meeting, you could know this is a special charter meeting and do it first, or, there's procedural ways you can make sure you could do it at the same time.
What's the one after the 9th? Just in case. For the selectmen? The 23rd?
Too late. Too late, 'cause we have 30 days starting tomorrow, right?
Assuming that we are a path of least resistance to the changes that are recommended, if we had a 4 o'clock or 4:15 meeting on the 9th, and you had a 5 o'clock Board of Selectmen meeting beforehand, we could process a collaboration in 45 minutes and maybe have a cup of coffee.
We would need to be probably earlier, 'cause our regular meeting has been, it's a regular meeting that's been noticed, I'm not sure. It starts at 4, but if we did it at 3, we'd do it at 3?
Yeah, I don't think you need more than an hour.
I don't think so either.
Sound all right to you, Mr. Chairman?
And if we start at 3...
Middle of the workday, but other than that.
Well, I mean, or, I mean...
That's right, you're at will.
Well, I mean, I guess this week, you know, you can play, we can play this by ear, you'll know.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to let you know my plan, and again, my plan is to meet Thursday with our board. We already have a, we already got a quorum, so it's not a problem. I think we're gonna walk out of there pretty, I don't wanna, I don't wanna jinx it, but I think we're gonna have a pretty good recommendation. I think we have a small collabor, a short collaboration meeting with you guys, and then we're gonna put something on the agenda to just vote forward.
All right.
And I think that's, I think we should, my vote, we should plan for the 9th, being that we know the three of us already have that day, and...
Okay.
At 3 o'clock, yes, 'cause you don't know when you end your meeting, right?
Yeah.
All right, let's...
Well, the first selectmen, in terms of other stuff that we have there.
I mean, the agenda's always full, it's impossible to know right now, so...
Okay, let's, let's, let's early say 3 o'clock on the, on the 9th.
Before the three of us are here for this.
Maybe we should look possibly at a special meeting, because if the public wants to, there wasn't many people here, but maybe they'll wanna weigh in on some of the recommendations, and you might wanna have it at a time when people don't have to pay attention, now that they know there's actual recommendations and things coming down the pike.
Well, we had two public sessions, and you guys had two public sessions, right?
Just saying, now that maybe the public knows there's actual recommendations, they may wanna weigh in.
I mean, there's also the meeting where you guys vote to accept the charter or not accept it.
Right.
Parts of it, that's the biggest...
And that would be a public comment session as well, right? And I just think that maybe public, I know we haven't had a lot of meetings, but you were at the dead, like toward the end, and I was reading through all the emails that you received while we were sitting here. I didn't really check out that many. So who knows, you know, people may wanna say, hey, yea, 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 to whatever. It's just a bit more transparent if you do it, maybe at a special meeting when people can come.
So I'm sorry, so our meeting is on the, gonna be on the 9th, right?
You have a regular Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, yeah. And you'll have, you'll be getting us this charter when, Chris? The revised charter, you guys are meeting on Thursday?
We're gonna meet on Thursday. I would think by the 9th, we'll have another recommendation, we'll have a meeting with you to just, I mean, just to say, hey, you know, you guys recommended five things. The first four things, we just accepted what you said, and everything's cool, and the fifth thing, we changed this word to this, and that's what I expect that meeting to be. We'll check the heads in the right direction, and then we'll have another meeting to just vote it forward.
Okay, all right, good. We're all set.
All right, guys.
Thank you so much, Chris.
Good night, guys.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you to the board, appreciate it. Thank you for letting us...
Thanks, Jason and Phil. Thank you, Brenda.
Motion adjourned.
Motion, second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Special, okay, we're adjourned, but thank you to Karen Whackerman, Jason Buxton, Judy Ewen, Phil Pierce, Eric Tressick, Campbell Tressick.
He's here. See the mate near the saucer.